Clerk Perez. Furman did let me know that he might be late. But other than that, I think we're still looking for four Alders. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Oh, three. Well, just wait a minute more, folks. And if I can ask the tech staff to please resend the link to Alder Harrington McKinney.
We will do right now.
Thank you very much.
I am present, too.
And you can hear us?
Yes, I can hear. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Even better. All right, so then I will call out of recess and reconvene the common council meeting that started on Tuesday, November 9th of 2021, and ask the clerk to call the roll. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Furman? Alverson?
Present.
Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Heck?
Here.
Lemmer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Miazze?
Here.
Revere?
Here.
Gudiver?
Here.
Wahalia?
Here.
Abbas?
Present.
Alboris?
Here.
Benford?
Present.
Bennett?
Here.
Carter?
Present.
Conklin?
Here.
Curry?
Here.
Evers?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have Quorum.
Thank you. I just will briefly remind folks just of our status. What is currently before us is the 2022 executive operating budget as amended by the Finance Committee and this body. And we have on the table two capital amendments and the capital budget as a whole. And so we'll need to come back to those and take them off the table at some point. And I believe that we have five operating budget amendments to work through yet tonight. And we'll continue with the process of getting a motion, having questions for staff, allowing the lead sponsor to speak, and then going into discussion unless there's any objection to that order of business. And seeing none, is there any, are there any questions about process or where we're at? We'll also ask staff to share screen and with the amendments at the beginning so everybody can make sure we have the same version. There are a lot of versions flying around. And so I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Will staff begin a report regarding the latest email about the levy?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Would you like to be there now, Mayor? Or?
Uh, yes. Do you want to start with an update on where we're at?
Certainly. I sent everyone an email roughly 40 minutes ago. So the maximum levy has been revised slightly downwards about 15,000 or so from where you were at prior to this evening. And that primarily reflects information that we received from the Department of Revenue this afternoon on allowable refunded property taxes that we can include in the levy limit calculation. And that was less than what we thought it would be. We also discovered a minor technical adjustment in another part of the levy limit calculation. And then we've also set aside about $3,800 just in case there are any other technical adjustments we need to make so that the final adopted levy is less than the maximum allowable levy under the levy limit calculation. So what remains in terms of the difference between the maximum levy and the Finance Committee's levy amount is $65,000. So that's what you all have in terms of amendments that you can adopt this evening can spend up to $65,000 of levy effect on those amendments.
President Abbas, a question?
Yeah, quick question. Sorry, Dave, my internet was a little bad. You mentioned something about $3,800. What was that?
So that's just a small margin we've set aside in case there are any other technical corrections that might happen just so that the the final adopted levy does not exceed the maximum allowable under the levy limit calculation. And that amount will, and any amount that you don't levy will carry over to next year. So it's not lost, for example.
So after $3,800 is taken, then we have $65,000 left?
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, and Dave, what I'll ask you to do is before each amendment to just remind us of that number that's left and what the amendment we've just moved would do to it, if you get my meaning. So we'll start then on Amendment Number Eight, which is in public health regarding focused interruption coalition. And Alder Carter, would you like to make the motion?
Move adoption.
President Abbas?
Second.
Right, moved and seconded to adopt. Dave, let's start with any levy impact that this amendment would have.
This amendment would not have any impact on the levy.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Seeing no questions for staff, Alder Carter, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much, Mayor. I just want to say that this amendment will allow focused interruption to retain its current staff and autonomy as they deliver services to the community. It will also provide a pathway for public health to support and support focused interruption. And it also allows public health to continue expanding their violence prevention unit as well as allowing focused interruption to be able to collaborate with other partners and organization as they go forth on a county-wide scale.
Thank you, Alder. Is there further discussion on this amendment? Seeing none. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of Amendment Eight? Seeing none, we will record a unanimous vote in favor of Amendment Eight. And move on to Amendment Nine. Alder Revere, a motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move adoption of the amendment.
Alder Carter?
Sec, second. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Moved and seconded. And Dave, let's start with the check on the levy and the impact.
Certainly, Mayor. The, this amendment would have a $7,776 impact on the levy. And that, if this amendment's adopted, it would leave about $57,275 left.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Alder Revere?
Thank you again. Yes, questions, please, for Streets Superintendent Romines.
Superintendent Romines?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie, for being here. I was hoping that you could give us an overview of why this amendment is necessary, please.
Sure. So in the, this past year, for example, the baseline, if you will, was we operate two full-service drop-off sites that are open year-round, expanded hours, April through November, and less hours in the winter months. And then we have a yardway site, which is only open for the, those summer months, if you will, out at the South Point location. We have a capital budget project next year at the Badger Road site, which is one of the full-service drop-offs. That was going to necessitate closing that drop-off this year because we're going to be in construction probably from shortly after the time the ground thaws until October. We had been looking at some potential alternate sites. When the executive budget came out and made the necessary cuts to balance the budget, one of those cuts was cuts to our seasonal hourly wages, which are really some of the things that are critical to keeping those drop-off sites open. So at that point, we were kind of just figuring we were going to go with the two drop-off sites, which would not include a center-city drop-off. We would operate Sycamore as it had been. And we would move that full-service hours and site out to South Point. Shortly after that came through, Alders, Revere, and Carter reached out and asked if there was something else that could be done. And so we internally kind of revamped the conversation around coming up with a temporary site for a drop-off location. We settled on Olin Avenue. However, that can only really work on business hours, so that would be evenings and weeks. And, but we needed a restoration of the hourly funds to do that. So we got some of those funds back during the Finance Committee portion, and this would be the balance. That would keep the drop-off site open at Olin Avenue, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and then for full-eight-hour days, Saturday and Sundays.
Thank you. And further, could you please explain why you felt it was necessary that we find additional levy capacity to fund this? In essence, what you've shared with me privately, of course, is that the Streets Division budget is so tight, you simply can't find, you know, what is an exceedingly small amount of money in the grand scheme of things in your agency budget for this additional $8,000 that's needed. Is that correct? And could you just broadly explain why that $8,000 that's needed can't be found within your existing budget as before us tonight?
Sure. Well, in the past few budgets, the Streets Division has lost over six figures of seasonal hourly wages. It's just been necessary to balance the budget. I'm not complaining. But that's reality. And certain services, we are already scaling back. This would be another one with drop-off sites. Brush collection has gone from nine collections to six, and next year would be five. We are already looking at taking full-time employees, which we are blessed not to have any cuts in that area, and having them do some of the work that has traditionally been done by seasonal employees. And so when we're getting that tight, it just comes down to, you know, at some point, I can't make a commitment to do more, to open these drop-off sites for the hours that are available when we're already taking some things, gains in other areas, and implying them to not have reductions in other services. So given that we've already kind of taken that slack out of the chain, I felt it's necessary to, if we're going to try and keep those additional hours open for the drop-off site, it's going to have to be paid for.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Are there other questions for staff? Seeing no other questions for staff, Alder Revere, did you wish to speak to this?
Yes, please. Thank you very much again. So first of all, I appreciate everyone's indulgence that we are forced, in this case, to go to our very small remaining levy capacity. As is probably apparent to most of the council, this amendment was before the City Finance Committee a few weeks ago as we were taking our operating budget deliberations. That the full amount of the amendment could not be funded that night because simply proceeding an alphabetical order of agencies through opposed amendments at Finance Committee, we came up short and hit the levy capacity as the Finance Department knew it that night. So the Finance Committee unanimously, and I certainly support the support to the tune of almost $11,000. However, it really is critical that we find the additional $8,000 that is needed to provide a decent hourly coverage for what I would argue is among the most basic of city services. And it really is unfair to our constituents that reside particularly on the Isthmus, the near west side, the near east side, south side, that would be forced to either drive to Sycamore or South Point, which for those that haven't been to South Point, you've heard me, some of you have heard me say before, I think most Madisonians might consider that to be in Middleton because it is surrounded by Middleton. So in any event, I really urge my colleagues to support this amendment to ensure resident access to this most basic of city services and allow our constituents to take their recyclables, including electronics that are not permitted to be collected at the curb for obvious reasons owing to the environment and yard waste and the like. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Revere. Is there further discussion on Amendment Nine? Seeing no further discussion, is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of Amendment Nine? Seeing no objection, we will record a unanimous vote in favor of Amendment Nine. And we will take up Amendment Ten. Alder, excuse me, President Abbas, a motion, please, on Ten.
Madam Mayor, can I do a motion to table this and go to Amendment Eleven and then come back on Ten? As we receive latest information on levy limit, the staff is working adjusting some of the numbers of that amendment, if that's acceptable.
It's a perfectly appropriate motion, yes.
Thank you.
I'll second.
The motion is to place Amendment Ten on the table. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of tabling Amendment Ten? Seeing no objection, Ten is on the table. And we'll come to Amendment Eleven, which is, impacts the fire and police departments and regards CARES crisis workers. Alder Furman, a motion on Amendment Eleven?
Move adoption.
Alder Conklin? A second? Or Alder Curry?
Alder Conklin is restarting her internet.
Thank you.
Second.
Alder Curry will second. Dave, a check on the levy and impact, please?
Sorry, Mayor. Amendment Eleven would have no impact on the levy. And there is currently still $57,275 of levy limit remaining.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Assistant Chief John Patterson.
Assistant Chief Patterson, please.
Hi, Assistant Chief Patterson. I know you've had an opportunity to see this at this point. And this was a modification of an idea that was introduced at Finance. The big difference is, for those that want the little bit longer story, was now this is half-year instead of full year, and this is giving MPD the option to figure out where this would come out of the budget. Have you got an opportunity? I know you had a possible suggestion at Finance. And if, wanted to know, is that still where you would take it from? Where would you possibly take this money from? And I know you don't need to decide that tonight, but I think it'd be helpful to share with council members where this may come from.
Well, being in salary savings, this would be the chief's decision that kind of, that point in 2022 to evaluate where our attrition is at, what vacancies we would have potentially open at that time. So we'd have to take all of the factors that are at play at that moment in 2022. And ultimately, the chief would have to make that call on what's best to achieve the savings.
Thank you. Chief Barnes, if there's anything you would like to add, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Alder Furman. I would agree with Chief Patterson. We would certainly have to determine at that time if we did have the salary savings from our attrition. Unfortunately, right now, as you're aware, we are battling some retention issues. And so we do not know if those issues will be persistent in the continued future. It's certainly my goal to resolve those through hiring next year and through making sure that we can keep the people that we have. I guess my concern is understanding that if this is a one-time ask or if this is a continuing, continuing ask of the Police Department because I certainly anticipate that attrition will not, will not be the same this year as it is next year and in the years to come.
Thank you, Chief Mayor. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to answer that or if you just, you want to answer that as chair or Finance wants to answer whether or not this is a one-time thing or how the budget, budgeting process works for something like this?
I think that's a good question for the Finance Director.
Thank you.
So in the, Alder Furman, in response to your question, in the cost of continued process, we basically go back and look at how much it'll cost to continue the current level of services. And that will be based on the authorized strength and the overall positions in the Police Department. So that's, that's what we would, that's what we would base it on. Again, looking at what turnover might be, what the size of the academy class might need to be, and issues like that. So I suppose you could say that this would be, you know, that reduction would be one time in effect.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I have no further questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter, questions for staff?
Yes, first, Chief Davis, I have a question for you. Is he with us?
I'm here. Yep.
Okay, thank you, Chief Davis. So we all know that the CARES program is in its pilot stage. And also, you've been very vocal about adding extra money to the pilot as you and your staff gather data and really look at how you would expand this program in the future. So if you were to receive the $82,000, what, first of all, what would you hypothetically do with it? And since the pilot program isn't, ends in, I believe, is September, and that's when we should be evaluating it, how do you see this going forward with this $82,000?
Well, I think the the amendment is pretty specific as to what we, what we can hire with it. And it looks like a third paramedic.
So you have two cars and it would rotate with the third paramedic, correct?
Well, assuming the capital budget amendment that's on the table gets approved, we would have two cars. And then we would have the ability to put two teams out in the field. One additional paramedic is going to need that crisis worker with them. So, you know, I'm not really 100% sure, I guess, what we would do with it at this point. I think since the amendment is written so specifically, I guess we would hire another paramedic.
Chief, I want to make sure that you're, you've got the most recent version. The language that I see, and maybe staff can share it on the screen again, is appropriate funding for two contracted mental health crisis workers for six months.
Okay, yeah. I guess I don't, yep.
So Alder Carter, does that answer your question? And the language of the amendment is pretty specific.
It is pretty specific. And I think both Chief Davis and I was looking at the old version. How would this have, well, I guess one of my questions is, is, you know, all the time that we put in on the committee and I have to definitely give a shout out to Alder Vice President Martin. But all the time that the committee put in to set up this pilot program with the staff that they felt program with the staff that they felt was adequate for the pilot program, and to infuse more workers into it, I just wonder what is the, how does that affect the, the data and, and results when we're adding more people at a premature time of only having a few months of, of actually operating the pilot program? But Chief Davis, you don't have to answer that. That was just my streaming of knowledge out there for you.
On the edge, Alder, on the edge.
That's why I wear flats, Mayor. That's why I wear flats.
In all seriousness, though, I just will remind us all that we're in questions. You all have an opportunity to discuss after we finish questions. So, is there another question, Alder Carter?
There is a question for Chief Barnes, because I want to know how this seriously affects the performance of the Police Department.
You know, I think-
I should say policing.
No, you know, it is unfortunate that currently, you know, we have a large number of retirements and/or resignations. We have attempted to present a budget that was very reasonable. There were additional asks for the Town of Madison, for example, there were 14 officers that we reduced to eight. There were different things that our Police Department was able to give to the city. We certainly support CARES. I support Chief Davis and everything that he does. I am just concerned that, you know, that, that further cuts, further money being taken from the Police Department sends a message that we, that we're not making concessions, and I think that I've heard that from, from the community. My current budget reduces the number of police officers by two. We're civilianizing some positions so that we can bring in some people to help. We're looking at areas where we don't need a badge and gun to do that work, that we're trying to civilianize those particular areas. We're trying to present, I am trying to present a Police Department that is representative of our community. I had an opportunity, as you all did, to listen to the public comments from many members of our community, and I listened intently to some of those comments. There is issues of trust and legitimacy, not only internally but externally in our community, and we're working hard to address those issues. Some of the issues that were presented, it's certainly not lost on me as a police officer and as a human being. When I hear citizens call in and they talk about how they perceive the police are treated and/or was treated, I understand that. Not only do I understand that, I experienced that or have experienced that. I can't speak for anyone who may be listening or on this call, but I can speak for anyone who's ever attended the funeral of a family member who was killed by a police officer, because I did that, and I know what that's like. And so I dedicate myself to this profession in order to improve it. I don't think policing is going anywhere. I don't think it will be abolished, and it certainly cannot be defunded. But we have to build a Police Department that quite frankly is responsive to the needs of our community, and I'm trying to do that. I'm trying to reduce crime while also having police officers who will respond in a manner that's professional, and I think we're doing that. We're certainly not perfect, but perfection is not my goal. Being exceptional is. And so I hope that answers your question, and that's a long-winded answer, but, you know, I feel like it needed to be said, and certainly I can add more, but for now, I will leave it at that.
Yeah, and, and just one more question. Chief Barnes, can you refresh my mind on what was the overall percentage that everyone had to abide by to reduce their, their, their budget?
The exercise was to present a 5% reduction in the budget.
Okay, thank you. I might come back with some additional questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder Carter. And just to be clear, while every agency that's not a utility had to present a 5% cut scenario, we did not take 5% from every agency in the executive operating budget. President Abbas, questions?
Thank you very much. Some of the questions is already asked by Alder Carter, and thank you, Chief Barnes, for detail answer and your statement. Chief Davis, I have a question for you first. Congratulations on your retirement, so.
Thank you.
I know during the Finance Committee, I ask, I'm going to ask similar question, if, for the public interest, people who are listening, could you please give us an update where we are with the CARES program, and how much data has been collected, what is the process? If you can speak to that, that would be great.
Sure, we've, we've had the team in service since early September. To date, I believe we've been on 60 or 61 calls for service. We went through a, when it, when it first started, we went through kind of a interesting first week or two where the calls were limited, but as time has moved on, the call volume has increased. We've made some adjustments with the 911 center, and they've started to realize that the team maybe can go to, to calls that are outside of police and fires realm as a first set of eyes. So those call takers will go through the protocol and then say, well, it's not really a police or a fire issue, let's just send the CARES team over to check out what's going on. So we've been on a few of those calls. I think 11 or so have been repeat patients, so they've seen more than one time. And we're in the process right now of working with the data team and, and Public Health. As you know, Public Health will have the program coordinator attached to this, and they're within a week or two of starting. Danell and I spoke just before the meeting, and I think they're ready to hire somebody. And so, once we start to put all these pieces of puzzles together, I think there's three major buckets that need to occur. First of all, we need to have the dashboard and really analyze the data and figure out not only their response times and all those things, but what the outcomes are of the patients, because that's critical. Right now, we don't really know what the outcomes are, because we, there's just not a large enough dataset to analyze, and we're, we're continuing to work through the data team to figure out what the outcome needs to look like. And when I say outcome, I mean, does the patient become more stable in their own life and start to take ownership of their own life and make decisions that, a variety of decisions? So, so that's kind of one bucket, is the data side. The second side is, we really need to sit down and do somewhat of a strategic work plan on growth for the program. One of the fears I have, and I continue to say that through this process, is there needs to be more planning that's put into it, and, and I've gotten a lot of contact out of the community saying, you know, take the money, take the money, just keep adding. Well, at, at some point, it's going to be this thing that we aren't going to have control and supervision over. My fear is that something is going to go wrong, i.e. a community member is going to be injured needlessly, or a first responder will be injured or, or killed needlessly. And so, when I say we need to just slow down a little bit, those are some of the things I'm talking about, is, is we need to analyze the data, we need to, to really come up with a strategic work plan long-term, because we haven't done that. We've had the committee, Alder Martin sat on, Alder Carter attended some of those day meetings, worked with the Dane County Supervisors, and we talked about growth, but we really haven't put the plan together yet. And then third, as, as part of that plan, I think it's going to need more supervision as we add more people into it. And then, thirdly, is we still have a wraparound issues that, that needs to be addressed. And I'm hoping through a strategic work plan that needs to come up, that we can somehow address how we're going to handle that wraparound service. And what I mean by that is, the, the resources aren't deep enough just to take these people and take them over to Journey, or take them to a hospital, or take them wherever. There needs to be investment out of the community from the mental health side of the, the patient, and so that they get the proper treatment and the proper evaluation, and probably most importantly, the proper follow-up, right? So we can treat them in that acute situation, but if nobody follows up with them, we're going to, going to continue to put them in this cycle of acute care, and I think that's what we're trying to avoid. And, and, you know, history has shown us that if we can treat the root cause, the acute care part of it takes care of itself. So those are kind of the three major areas, I think, that we need as a, as a, as your body and as a community, we need to address. And that's why I've been hesitant to continue to take money. I would, I would absolutely love to get more money from Chief Barnes. However, I might be the only fire chief in this country today saying, don't give us more money from the Police Department. In fact, I'll probably lose my fire chief card over it.
Really appreciate the detailed answer. Thank you very much. Last question is about the Dane County, and I know that a lot, then we launched this program, we didn't get any funding from the Dane County. So with your strategic work plan, I, I'm assuming, once that work plan is done, there is a possibility to also engage Dane County as part of this CARES plan?
Yeah, and, and Dane County has done a lot more work around this than we have. Mayor, you could maybe bail me out on the name of their team that they've worked on for about a year to put a plan together around this. We're, we're a cog in that wheel, and I'll, I'll let you answer, Mayor.
Yeah, so the, the county does, is looking at these issues, and, and as you know, Alder is, does a lot more in the mental health field than we do. Obviously, we've been cooperating with them very closely in this effort, but I think the, the larger ecosystem, as the chief says, is really important, and the county is funding into a lot of that larger ecosystem. I, I think, you know, to, to get to your question about potential expansion, I think there's a lot of unanswered questions about potential expansion. We could expand hours of day, we could expand geography, or we could expand to other agencies, which would be the county or surrounding fire departments, if that's the direction that they wanted to go. So I wouldn't make any assumptions at this point in time about what that would look like.
Appreciate that, Mayor, and appreciate Chief Davis for really detailed answer. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, President Abbas. Alder Harrington-McKinney, questions for staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is to Chief, Chief Davis. I think in the mayor's summary, she kind of hit on the questions that I had with the, the CARES program in terms of determining what, where, how that expansion will look like, and you mentioned the lack of having a strategic plan. My question is very specific. Does it show fiscal responsibility to increase staffing when we don't, when you don't have the, the data to support? Because it's a good program, and so my question is, is that, is it fiscally responsible to begin investing it and bring it to the quality level that it can be brought to at this, at this point?
Well, I don't know if I can answer your fiscal responsibility as a body, right? I, I, I can say, I hope that this passion around fiscal support continues for the next, you know, five to 10 years. You know, last year, we were very, there was a lot of passion out of your group as council members on funding this and getting it going, and, and that was good to see after Alder Martin and myself and a couple others hit our head against the wall for a number of years, trying to get a little bit of feed out of the trough, if you will. And so, my hope is that, that you continue to be passionate about it and funding it. Whether I can say to you it's fiscally responsible or not, that's probably a better question for Mr. Schminnicky, I don't know, or the mayor. We will spend the money if it's given to us. And we have a history of spending the money.
Let me re, let me reframe my question. And my question is, at this point, sitting in the seat that you're sitting in and observing the, the program as it's running now, what is your comfort level with adding more dollars and staffing to the program at this point?
Well, I said in Finance as well, I don't, I don't know that we're ready to staff more yet. The dataset's not really big enough to know what we're even looking to do just yet. And so, you know, we, we can hire more people, but I'm not sure what we'll do with them. We can, we could expand out of the central district. We haven't looked at, at call types east or west or north or south yet to see if there's actually a need there. We, we know there's a need in the central district, because that's, you know, we see a, a higher call volume for mental health crisis downtown, and a lot of that was based off of police, the Police Department's data they provided us at the beginning of the year last year. And so, you know, we, I, there's just not enough information yet for me to make a real professional decision on where we need to expand the program to. And I know that the county is part of this, and they want to expand it countywide, and I agree, it probably should, but I suspect there's probably less need in some of the rural areas than we see in the denser city areas, Sun Prairie, Madison, Pittsburgh, Middleton. And so, you know, that, that discussion, when that occurs with the county, about expansion and who's going to pay for what, we need some data around that so that we make smart decisions.
I have one, my final question, and my final question is that you, you mentioned acute care and follow-up, and it sounded as though that there was some, some concern there. Could you, could you say more about what you see as acute care follow-up and why that that would be a possible concern?
Sure, and so the, the, the issue of, let's say, a chronic diagnosis of any mental health, mental health disorder, because that's what we're really focused on, is, you know, there's a, maybe a chronic diagnosis, but during that chronic timeframe, there's acute events that occur, where a patient maybe either adjusts their meds or goes off meds or has some life-changing experience, and this team is designed around responding to that acute issue. And the important part is that wraparound service on the backside so that we, we break the cycle of those acute occurrences, so those one-time, one-off things. We've, we've got to make sure that we're building a system that we can provide follow-up care for that person, so that even though they have a chronic diagnosis, they can manage that themselves and manage it with the proper medical and healthcare. And so, you know, that, that's, that's such an important piece of this whole response, so that we don't continue to have that- so that we don't continue to to have that that acute cycle go on that we've seen uh so frequently across the city.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief. Madam Mayor, I'm complete.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole, questions for staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Davis, I have a couple of questions for you. So um first one, have 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 there been any communications with other agencies across the country that have implemented CARES that, you know, whatever the names they call it in other areas, but the same the same kind of project? Have there been any contacts with them to get input, feedback, suggestions on how to revamp the the program?
Yeah, we we have partnered with the the Kahoots program in Eugene, Oregon, as well as staff. Everybody gets talks to across the country. We had them part of our, as part of our development committee. One or two times they came in and answered and and asked questions. The one advantage that they have in that program is it's funded privately. And so they they they're at a, I think, a 20 or 25 year mark for providing this service in their community, and the majority of it comes privately, so that it's not on the taxpayers' uh So, you know, it's kind of comparing apples and oranges. The service is essentially the same. But a lot of the things I've talked about tonight as far as the wraparound services are all embedded already. And so they have um they have less challenges currently, and I think they probably faced them 20 years ago, 25 years ago when they started the program. Um but but they they don't deal with the same kind of um lack of resources that we deal with. The other team we talked to that that's more comparable is the STAR program in Denver, Colorado. Um and and they're a fresh startup, and I think it's a combination of public and private funding um for their program. They've uh they grew relatively quickly out of a mental health uh team concept that the police department had run. Um and so um we we conferred with them quite a bit as well. I think the challenge that, we all want to jump into this, but the challenge for providing the services, every community is so much different. Right? And and there's resources in Madison, Wisconsin, maybe, that aren't available in Denver for a certain population in the community. And likewise, in Denver, there's resources that are available that aren't aren't available here in Madison. And so um when this concept started a number of years ago now and and we started to have these discussions, one of the things that that we we need to continue to look at is, are we meeting the need in the community? And um I I'll be honest with you right now, I don't know that we have enough data to know if we're meeting the need or not yet. We're kind of shooting in the dark a little bit on this and the concept of it. Um and I'll give you just a brief anecdotal explanation on what I mean. So the team started out pretty slow, and then um to get some calls under their belt, we started to send them to ETOH alcohol-related calls. Um so for about a two-week period, we sent them to to that call of uh uh that comes across that you hear of man down. It's um nine times out of 10 an alcohol-related issue. Somebody's uh overconsumed or been over-served and they're laying in the street somewhere in a bus stop. Those typically, right in the system, typically go to EMS on the fireside and also the police department. And so we intentionally started to send CARES to those with those other two agencies, with fire and police. At the end of the day, the way the system's set up, the outcome's the same. The person goes to detox um and they're they're transported by MPD because that's the the policy on it. Uh we as an EMS agents not transport those folks uh to detox uh by law. So um that outcome is somewhat predictable. They go through their treatment process at um at detox, and then they're released back into the community, and that cycle starts again. And so, and that's part of my fear here, is if we have so many people sitting around and we're looking for them for things to do, I think that we'll start to see some mission creep, and the potential is there because we can argue that alcohol is a mental health issue. There's no question about that, that's what I'm saying, but if we spend all their time on alcohol, um they aren't, they don't have the time to deal with what they're really there for, which is that mental health crisis, if that makes sense. I think it was a really long answer to your short question.
Thank you. Um yeah, I was kind of actually looking program-wise, not the funding sources, but that that was, that's insightful, thank you. So um the other question I have is, I I I'm sensing a lot of uncertainty on on direction, like um like that keeps on coming up. So I don't know exactly what was discussed on the committee that 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 brought up the the program to the city, but is there, would it help for the council to put a timetable to march to march towards? Would would it help to have some deadlines, some specific um um outcomes, expectations when it comes to processes specifically?
Uh yeah. Let me just, I'll say yes, but I'm not sure I understand your question completely. Um we do need to, we do need to define outcomes, and is that what you're talking about?
So I'm I'm talking about the processes. So I heard earlier that that um the pilot ends on September, and I'm trying to understand, was that by resolution? Was that, I don't know who can, I was gonna, I don't know if you know the answer to that. Is that in writing? Someone decided that the pilot ends on September? Was that part of the process?
I I still am having a hard time trying to figure out what you're what you're asking.
So so my question first was, is is there anywhere where it was stated in your processes that the pilot project will end in September?
Um, no.
Okay, um okay, so um what I'm getting at, what I'm trying to get at is like, I also hearing that there has been, you guys have gotten creative, trying to to get people moving around and making sure that you have. So there's a lot of freedom for you guys to try to get to work this out, but also hearing that there's kind of dead time in between that is, that there's that uncertainty that we are not really getting our heads around it. So I am trying to to marry those. Is there anything that, anything that we as council can do to help establish a timetable that will allow you to just kind of focus on remarching to this date to get things settled?
No, I, you know, I don't think so. The program coordinator will um be on board and and they're gonna, for those of you that don't know, we we hired a program coordinator for that process. Um I'm I've been told by Genell that uh the latest they'll start is December 6th. And so, once that person's in place, you know, they're gonna work to coordinate not only the some of the day-to-day stuff with the team, but also that higher level. Hopefully take the lead on establishing a strategic work plan for this group um and really work with the data team that's that's done a lot of work so far on the dashboard. Uh once that person's in place, then I think it naturally flows to the next step of um of doing that strategic plan. Part of that step is gonna have to be community input, and I see that that uh or I would foresee that that's where a a big part of your work would come in and that we are, we're gonna need to to talk to our neighbors in our community and see see what they want and what they need and what they expect, and and I would uh hope that each one of you will help take the lead in your districts on that type of feedback. Um so, you know, this is, it's it's uh it's similar to a lot of different programs that will be introduced into the city. We started out, we get feedback, we make corrections, and then we get some good strong guidance in the next year or two on resources that we'll need, right?
Thank you, Chief Davis. Um, thank you. So I I have a question, another question, if I may, may I please, to Chief Barnes? So um earlier, there was a question about how the how this impact the police department, and as much as I appreciate your answer on that, I also want to take the other side of that of that, I mean, there's another side of that story that I think is important to 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 clarify. Um last year, I was personally paying a lot of attention to to the data that was coming to that was coming from MPD regarding mental health, mental health um calls and hours spent by M by police officers serving that that crisis. Uh and there were thousands of hours per quarter. So can you share with us, what are you hearing from your staff, from the people on the ground on regards to how CARES is being beneficial to their day-to-day job?
Yes, um thank you, Alder Cole. I can certainly, um I don't have any, uh the numbers in front of me right now. Obviously, any difference, um you know, there's differences, and then there are statistically significant differences. But qualitatively, I can tell you that I and the police department support the CARES, and they certainly support the work uh of Chief Davis. We want the um pilot to be successful. We want the program to be successful and expanded when the time comes. And so I have not heard anything from anyone in my police department that would suggest that the program uh is not welcome by our department.
So I mean, have you heard? I mean, I maybe, I know, I think I had talked to to um Chief Patterson about this, so either either one of you can answer. I really just want other people to hear the stories that I have heard already from from you guys about how how um how welcome has the program been by the people on the ground? Like, just, if you know, if you want, if you could please share that with the rest of us, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I I don't have any anecdotal stories with me. I can only tell you that um obviously, you know, I'm focused on the police department and some of the um issues we're trying to manage uh internally and 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 with violent crime in our city. But um I can tell you, if there was an issue, um it certainly would have been brought to my attention. Um I can defer to Chief Patterson if he may have uh more of an anecdotal story than I have.
Oh, thanks, Chief, and thank you, Alder. I would just add that uh, I mean, if you listen to the radio, especially downtown during the day, there's certainly excitement around CARES because any, like a concept that would potentially take work away from some of the officers, especially some of these lower-level type calls is is a positive thing. Uh but, you know, the the types of calls that really generate a lot of officer workload are the emergency detentions still. Uh so those are the types of calls you'll hear from us talking about that will still take significant uh officer work hours to to complete. Um so unfortunately, we're not seeing reduction in those necessarily, but um some of the lower-level calls were were getting excited about uh that potential.
There is a lot of support on the ground for this. That's what I want to get at, that I understand that that there there's an impact to the police, but it's there's also a positive impact to their, to everyone's men- uh morale and and work hours, correct?
Yes, I I have not heard anything other than.
All right, that's all I, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett, questions for staff?
Hello, yes, question. Uh this is for Chief Davis. Um I heard one of the concerns that you have about CARES or the pilot is like um people getting unnecessarily injured. Um how are you working right now to ensure um that those working within CARES aren't needlessly injured?
Sure, the, when the 911 call comes into the 911 center, they have a set of protocols that the call taker works through um primarily around um violence and weapons. And so if there is any mention of violence and weapons on that particular call, uh MPD is sent. Now, when MPD gets there and they they stabilize the scene or recognize that there there are no weapons or there is no violence, then at that point, they turn it over to the CARES program. And the CARES team can respond, and so it's really on the protocols that are established and and uh and Dane County doesn't just make these up on their own. They actually buy a set of protocols that are nationally recognized. And the the dispatcher um works through that protocol to send the appropriate resource.
And um and correct me if I'm wrong, um well, the the one of the promises of CARES is to reduce community harm and slash injury, needless injury um from ill ill response to mental health calls. Am I correct?
Uh yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, it could be surmised then that like um by adding funding towards CARES, we're also helping to reduce harm, right?
Well, I don't know that that gets to the the suicidal subject or homicidal subject that sits in their house and shoots at firefighters and cops as they pull in the driveway. Um by, you know, by adding more money, that that doesn't take away that risk. So that, you know, I think ultimately, down the road, you know, but between all the programs that you're funding, the violence prevention um and all those types of things through public health, ultimately, it helps reduce overall um that risk, but there there will be always be those acute moments where somebody is just pissed.
Right, and those will always be there. It's always something that, but it's ultimately putting together a holistic response.
That's correct. Right, this is another piece of that puzzle. There's not a, I, and I can't speak for the Madison Police Department, but there, I can't imagine there's a cop on the police department that doesn't want to offload this work, right? They do not want to do emergency detentions. They don't, and um you know, I think we can get to the point where um we can start to to intervene prior to ever needing that emergency detention. I think that's the ultimate goal for both of our agencies and public health, and should be your goal, right? Because we all want a safer community. But there's just moments where um police have to handle the situation because because it's the law, first of all, but secondly, it's the safest way our community can deal with it.
Right, right, certainly. Um and then, I know I asked this during finance, um so for those who weren't privy to this, I I'm just asking again. Um in our conversations, I understand that, well, um the call volume for CARES has been increasing, and you've already had the need to like increase the amount of CARES um teams out on the field, am I correct?
Well, so we've had, um they they work on as the main car out. Um I believe they're doing it every other day, so that crisis worker and the paramedic are paired up. And we go every other day. Um we've gotten them a backup car for what we call stack calls when there's multiple calls going on at the same time for CARES. And so um when they're not out in the street treating patients, they're back at the office doing paperwork and and uh working on uh building relationships in that wraparound service. And so uh they do have the ability, we do have the ability to put two teams in the street currently. Um I think it's happened three times now.
Right.
You have the data in front of me.
Where there's calls that you have two, two calls at the same time. And um I understand that CARES is like currently working 40 hours, seven days a week. And is it, is it safe to, am I, am I understanding it correctly that you have um what am I trying to say? Sometimes, you know, because it's like such a strenuous schedule, because of staffing, there's kind of double duty going on within CARES and the pilot program currently? Am I right there?
Oh, I don't, I did, I, is that a, is that a question?
Yes. I don't know if I'm explaining that right or if I'm understanding that right.
Yeah, so we haven't, I would say that there hasn't been a demand enough yet that um the team has been overworked or not been able to be off. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah, we haven't. Yeah, we haven't experienced that yet.
Okay.
You know, the um, I don't have the dashboard up in front of me right now, but. Uh, Thursday afternoons um have been the highest call volume, I believe, between noon and seven P M. Um. Can't tell you why.
Yeah, something about Thursday afternoons. I don't know, I would think it's Wednesday because hump day, but anyways, um. What am I trying to say? But the call volume itself has a trend right now with increasing, right?
I would say it's not, it's uh, it's been a, a slow trend upward.
A slow trend upward, right?
Yeah, so um.
A steady, so a steady.
Started, we had two or three days without any calls. Um, I don't believe they've had a day without a call in, in uh, a couple of weeks now. Turning to, to increase, yes.
Sweet, okay, and also. You know, because this amendment is to increase funding um for six months. Um, is it safe to surmise that within six months, should like this trend continue increase? This trend of like this gradual increase in calls, that you will need funds to respond to that. Steady increase in calls.
Um. It's probably, I mean, you could probably surmise that, yes. I, I don't know if, if that to be a fact just yet. Um, the, the fact that we've only put both teams in the streets three times in two and a half months tells me that. Um, there's, in six months, there's probably not going to be that much more of a demand. But I would think within two years, there's going to be a bigger demand, especially as we try to look at data and expand uh the either's. Either the other side of town.
Sure, sure. Um, and then, so like, I guess for my final question, I'm wondering. I, I, we've heard a lot about, you know, kind of doubts about increasing funding and what that could or could not do. Um, and I guess I just want to hear from you, um, the flip hand side of that. And I would love to hear, um, like the benefits, um, and the good things that could come out of. Increasing funds to cares with this amendment.
Well, I, you know what, I think that um, for you to say that there's doubts, I don't, there are no doubts in my mind that we're going to have to increase funding. Um, my only issue is doing it without a really strong plan. And we, we need to, you know, we, we kind of built this plane as we flew it. We refer to that a lot in our committee meetings is. We're building this plane as we go along. Um, once the plane's off the ground, we're going to really have to have a serious talk about how we're going to fund it. If the county's going to be involved, if the university's going to be involved. It, it, it can't be. A piecemeal approach of taking um eighty thousand dollars from the cops every year and putting it in, in the cares. Um, I, I think I'm more concerned over that, of that we start down this piecemeal approach. And my other big fear of it is when the passion goes away from defunding police. Will the council be there to support this program? Uh, the way it's going to need to be supported after we do kind of a strategic plan and. We gather more data and we look at where it's going. Ultimately, and I've shared this with a couple of you in my mind, I think this becomes a standalone agency. We, we get it out of the fire department and we have three public safety groups in the community. Police, fire and, and uh, a mental health response team. And I've, I've talked about that for a number of years. It's, it's not ready yet. It's not soup. It, the soup's still stewing away on the fire department's burner. But over the next uh five years. If I come back to Madison and this is still part of the fire department, I'm going to be disappointed in the elected officials because it. It needs to get out on its own and grow, right? And by being a standalone also, you know, you're, right now, we're limited a little bit by medical control on our side. Um, from a, from a, a medical control standpoint, you're limited on the police side on their rules and laws and what they can do. And so um. I guess I'll stop there, but, but I'm hoping that we actually sit down and come up with a really good plan on how we're going to fund this thing. Not just um taking money out of police or fires budgets to do it.
Right, and, and I'm not trying to be um mean, um. No.
Uh, uh, questions, Alder?
Yes, yes, um, uh, yes. So yeah, I'm not trying to be mean. I'm just wondering still for the second part of the question about benefits. I don't know if we tackled that in the last response. Could you expand more on benefits? Of this amendment?
Uh, Alder, I, I think the chief is. Made his position pretty clear here.
I, I, I said initially, yes, it, it would probably benefit the, the program. And then I followed it up with all of my concerns and the, the fact that um. As we build this plan as we fly it, piecemealing finances on the backside of it. Is, is, you, you run a risk of crashing the program.
Right, but ultimately.
Not, not as sustainable as it needs to be.
Sure, sure, and, okay, um. That, I'm just gonna stop right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry, questions for staff?
Yes, sorry, I thought Alder Benford was before me, but. If I got that wrong, I definitely will go. Um, Chief Davis, can you speak to um? The partnership that is, has been recently established between the pilot of cares and the longer standing community paramedicine program?
Um. Yeah, so our, our community paramedic program started in two thousand and twelve or thirteen. And for those of you that um are maybe newer, don't, don't know the history. We leveraged a couple of different grants to get that program off the ground. And that community paramedic folks deal with um people that are. Um, you could probably argue are, are on the mental health issues uh spectrum, if you will. Um, but they really become life coaches and try and coach people through their medical issues and to, to. Take ownership in their medical issues. They do a lot of uh. Uh, a lot on the medical side for follow-ups, uh incentives, um for folks. Uh, to make sure they keep going to their doctor's appointments. Um, they keep taking their medicines and regular check-ins with uh the people. The idea behind that um is to reduce the amount of EMS calls citywide. And so there's uh three, currently three full-time community paramedic folks. Uh, they work on some of our super users. Uh, call them the people that frequent uh the E Rs that primarily at Mariner Park. And try and reduce those folks from uh calling nine one one and getting into the medical system. Um, and then they were also work on a, an elderly population through a, a different grant through U W. Uh, focusing on uh, in three medical areas, C O P D, diabetes, and I can't remember the third one. Um, but they work to keep these folks in their homes and not use the medical system. Uh, unless it's scheduled and needed. And so the concept around mental health is similar to that. And so we consider our paramedics that work in these areas to be all community paramedics. Um, so if, if, for example, the, the, the community paramedics assigned to those medical issues. Uh, get there and realize that there's a, an acute mental health issue going on. Uh, they can, they can call for the cares team to come in and, and turn the patient over uh to the cares team. Um, but the, the paramedics um. In the cares team in their downtime, the idea is to utilize those paramedic skills. With some of these community paramedic patients. If that's what you mean about um the cooperative in the two teams. Then the third bucket of that is we have um one of our paramedics embedded um. With the Mari grant for uh reducing um. Uh, heroin overdoses. And so they're part of a team and Chief Patterson or Chief uh Barnes could probably speak more to that. Uh, but when, when uh there's an overdose in our community. That team that's funded through that Mari grant, um, public health has a component of that as well. Uh, those folks show up and try and get that person into treatment um to break that cycle of addiction. And we have one community paramedic on that team as well. Most of their work, though, is done in the E R.
Thank you. Um, so adding on to that, it seems like a lot of the concern or reluctance isn't around the actual cares program itself. Um, and under acknowledging the crucial need for it, but also the need to collect data to inform practice. Decisions, funding, all of that. Considering that uh cares is still in a pilot phase and, and the other programs. Like the longstanding partnership with Journeyman Mental Health, along with M P D as well as um new partnership with cares. Would, would the thought of using your. Skilled in a similar yet different division or area than cares be an idea to expand upon um? Cares while we also wait to collect that data?
Yeah, potentially, but I, I, I think that um. You know, when, when the strategic work plan gets off the ground for this new program manager. Uh, my hope is, is they look at, look at all of this as a holistic response. And that's, that's what I mean by hopefully in five years, this is a standalone agency doing all this work. That we have a lot of public health crisis in our community, right? We focus in on certain buckets of that crisis, but overall, um, many of the issues uh connect with each other. And so um, I believe it needs to be more of a holistic approach uh to, to. I hesitate to say public health because as Jello will tell you, they've got a different focus. Um, but it's, it's more of a, a medical health, uh more of a holistic medical health in the community. Public health certainly needs to be at the table for that discussion. But they don't, you know, as you know, they don't do a lot of uh, a lot of treatment. That's not really in their scope of practice.
Thank you. One last question, I guess. Um, so on the other hand of data collection and, and informing decisions. I don't think we yet have the, the, the information or the evidence to point to. Cares cannot no longer be an M F D or under the umbrella at this time. Um, if. The amendment on the table was different to possibly expand upon those existing programs that already are. Would, would your answer be similar or different than talking about cares?
Well, if you're trying to get me to yes, I'll take the money. Yes, we'll take the money and we'll spend it. However, my, my answer is going to remain the same, that, that we really need to look at this more holistically. Right? We're, we're, we're not only building this cares plan as we fly it. Um, but there's, there's more to it than that that we aren't seeing, so. We can put more people in the streets. I don't think it's going to change any outcomes yet. Because we don't know what the outcomes are yet that we're looking for. And so, how's that?
Thank you, Alder. Alder Benford, questions for staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day. I know we have some veterans on this call. Uh, Mayor, I have a question for Chief Davis.
Go ahead, Alder.
Uh, Chief, thank you. Thank you for all the time. Uh, never in my years have I seen such, so many alders trying to force money onto someone. And uh, I'm passionate about this, and so many of us are, and I suspect that's where. You know, that's what's driving us. And I heard you clearly, Chief, when you said that you hope in the future that uh we remain passionate about this. So I just have a really quick question. I know we're talking about a really specific amendment. Uh, I, this conversation has been fascinating, this discussion. Uh, and we're talking about potential, what it could look like or things in the future, but we're talking about a really specific amendment. I, I guess my question is, um, I heard you say you'll take the money because I don't want you to lose your uh fire chief card. Uh, I, I heard you say that you would, but just out of curiosity, would the money be better spent to help you? In planning, to help you, to help the new uh coordinator, project coordinator as far as collecting data? Uh, once again, I know that's not the amendment in front of us, but would something like that be more helpful?
Well, yeah, I, I think it would. Uh, you know, I don't. I think that we know a lot of the answers and we kind of know where the weaknesses are in our community for support. But like I say, I think we really do need to build this strategic plan. Um, and a, a plan that we can all agree upon and, and maybe it's not perfect for everybody, but um, but it works. So um, that, that would probably be a better use of the money at this point than sticking two more. Um, um. A crisis worker and a paramedic back in the street to, to really, I don't know if, if uh there's. Sure, there's companies out there that would love to take the money and help us build a plan. Um, but I also think we have enough talented staff that, that are familiar with the issues and, and know what's going on. Um, that, that we can get through that as a, as a group. Right? And because we, we know how to do all this work.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, may I ask you questions for staff?
I guess the, that Joel actually probably uh answered it, but it was more of a. I don't know, when I think about public safety, sometimes I, this is actually for Davis. I kind of think of it as a, not a either or, but I actually think it's both, right? Police and uh, and uh, the cares program. Um. And uh, I guess Chief Da- Davis, you, you kind of uh said it where, you know, the police go in and make sure that. That everything is fine before um, before the cares program goes in. So I guess it's a yes or no question. I know that you said that you take the money quick as, quick as uh. Pretty quick, but would you say that, a yes or no, would you want to see the, the impact first before the? Before uh the money? So I guess it's a yes or no question, not. Well, uh, I will take the money, we'll spend it, but sort of like a yes or no question. What do you think? Would you rather wait for the impact first? Or?
Yes.
Alright, and also I guess for uh Chief Barnes, you, you uh talked about the retention. And so forth, and I guess uh my, one of my colleagues said that um, the morale um. It's pretty good right now as far as feeling about the cares program. What is the morale really of the, the officers right now? Is there? Understaffed or uh not a lot of workers right now? Not a lot of officers uh due to a lot of, of the things that they have to. Uh, if you could uh just talk about the morale as far as officers.
Well, you know, I think when it comes to morale, it depends on who you ask. Um, you know, our officers are certainly um, uh, working diligently. Uh, to provide a safe community for our, for our citizens here in Madison, our community members here in Madison. But I think morale is good. I, I think that the uh mayor's e- executive budget was good for, for morale. I think um the conversations that we've had here are good for morale. Um, there's been many alders. Um, who are on this call now, obviously, who, who've reached out, attended meetings, uh even some difficult meetings. Um, and that's great for morale because they see that everyone has a vested interest in public safety. Uh, but it could get better. When it comes to uh resignations, they're not all created equal. We have some that uh resign because we hire good people and good people want to hire other good people. We have some who uh resign because they are, uh, they get married or they, they find their life partner and they want to move on. Certainly, you know, I wouldn't stand in the way of, of any of that. We uh hire big classes, which means that retirement has happened in big classes. Uh, we lost some serious um ground in our recruiting due to COVID. And we couldn't take those trips like we normally would to some of our educational um institutions. Uh, and so we're having to rethink and relook at that. One of the things that I'm working on now um is a minority recruiting effort. That I'm calling the More Program, Minority. Minority Officers Recruiting Effort. And you'll be hearing more about that as we get the details out. I have relationships with several of our historically black colleges and universities. So we're trying to diverse, diversify or increase the diversity in our police department. It's going to take some time, but certainly I think we're on the right track.
All right. Thank you.
Alder, Alder Carter, questions again? You're muted, Alder.
I just have two questions, one to Chief Davis. Going back to the committee that actually envisioned the CARES program. The pilot, was it the decision of the committee to have a year-long pilot?
I don't know that we ever officially made a decision on that. I think though that we all kind of agreed, but I might have to defer to Alder Martin or, Chief Studdman's on vacation today. He would be.
Okay. That's fine. I was just wondering, it was my understanding that.
Alder Carter, I believe Vice President Martin is willing to answer your question.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the question, Alder Carter. My, I don't believe that we actually set up a, and I was trying to go find it back in Landis Star. I don't believe that we set up a end date for the pilot because we wanted to make sure that this program would stay nimble and be able to go with changes that, that the data was showing us and, and do it in real time rather than saving up everything for an end of the year thing. So that, that was the impression that I was under as we never specifically specified anything regarding an end date, regarding how it's going to happen, just that, that's why we need the, one of the reasons why we need the program manager to help evaluate, evaluate that data so we can go forth and, and make changes that we need to in real time, as close as we can.
Thank, thank you, Vice President Martin. I, I could not, okay, thank you very much. And then my second question is to Chief Davis, I mean, excuse me, Chief Barnes. So when we, when we, when you look at the trifecta of the police department, the fire department and CARES working together, how do you see that in the future?
You know, I, I think it can work. I know it can work. I had an opportunity to, as many of you, to read the research articles on the Cahoos program. And it's cited in there from the correct creator that this program doesn't work without police. And so I don't want to be, to, to give the false impression that we're not supportive of CARES. We are, and I want to give the impression that, you know, giving money or having a fully funded separate CARES, the police department will have no involvement in that. That's certainly not true. Obviously, as Chief Davis stated, there are some legal requirements of the law that requires police officers to respond. Certainly in a utopian society, we would have independent mental health professionals who could do everything, transport to Winnebago, but unfortunately, those things are not reality right now. And so we certainly have to work together and it's certainly part of my plan to look at areas where we can give some of our responsibility to other agencies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder Carter. I have no other Alders. President Abbas, more questions?
No, I don't have a question. I want to move the alternative, alternate.
We're not quite there yet, President Abbas.
I just want to get in.
Okay. So are there any additional questions for staff? Seeing none. Alder Furman, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I appreciate the discussion this evening about this amendment. Want to be clear, this is an amendment that is looking to add funding for the CARES team to, for, the CARES to add a team, another team, starting in June. This amendment does not dictate where that team should reside in the city. This amendment does not dictate what time they should be working at. It, it makes funding available for us to expand this program. I think this program is an incredibly important program for Madison. I was excited when it was announced in late summer of 2020. I wish it had gotten off the ground a little bit sooner than September 2021, but I'm glad it did get off the ground and appreciate all the work everybody put in getting it going and look forward to us learning from them. As we heard from Chief Davis this evening, they're continually, they're continuing to improve this program and they're already making adjustments based on learning. I think one of the questions before us today is, do we believe that by June, there'll be enough data for them to add another team? I do. I believe that we should support this program. I believe we should add funding. We should tell, be showing our residents that this is something that's important to us and give, give the team the flexibility to have more personnel so this can make a bigger impact in our community. We're, I know there's hesitation about taking this from, from the police budget. Police budget's an eight million dollar budget, so we're clear. This is a very, 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 very small percentage. In order to improve a program that I think we all, we all recognize is a part of making our public safety and public health city better. So I'm hopeful people support this. I'm glad to see that, that at least in the alternate that's being proposed today, that there is an acknowledgement that we should be giving it more money. And in 2022, obviously, there's a difference that we'll hear momentarily on where that actually comes from and what that period of time is. I do also want to make it clear that, you know, this, I, I've never heard that CARES to be called a pilot. I appreciate Vice President Martin specifying a little bit clearer how this was structured to constantly do continuous improvement and, and do different things. But to be clear, CARES is not just funded until September, as, as an Alder may have implied with saying that there's this pilot. CARES has full funding for its current configuration until the end of 2022. So there's no cutoff. Yeah, and I just, I think this is an important step for us to show that we want to see this program expanded and, and with the data, the fire department can decide how to do that if this is passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Further discussion, President Abbas?
Can I please move an alternate?
President Abbas moves the alternate, and if we could get that up on the screen so folks can tell the difference. Is there a second for the alternate?
Second.
So President Abbas, and we'll move, and Alder Carter will second the alternate. Are there questions for staff on the alternate? Alder Evers, is it a question?
Well, yes. Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question that now that questions for staff are back open again. Just some clarification. This could be either to Chief Davis or Chief Barnes. There's this notion that police are securing the scene for the CARES team with every call. I don't, I think that's a misnomer. That's not my understanding of how CARES works. Could you please clarify? I, it's my understanding that this decision is made at the point of dispatch. We're not sending MPD with every call to secure the scene. The point of CARES is that we make a, we send a mental health unit to those calls that dispatch are able to discern do not require prior arrival from MPD. That is my understanding of the goal and implementation of CARES. Could you please clarify that for us?
That's correct. But as I said earlier, the dispatcher makes the determination on the appropriate response. If there's not weapons involved or there's not violence involved, MPD does not get dispatched. It would be the CARES team only. If there's an underlying, if there's an underlying medical issue, they will send our EMS response. But unless there's violence or weapons involved, MPD doesn't go.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you, Chief.
If I can just add to that, Alder Evers, if the situation changes, we would respond. If something, if the information was different, I don't want to, anyone to think that we won't respond if, if anyone from CARES needs the police department. We would respond if things changed, sir.
Of course. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harington McKinnney, additional questions for staff?
No, I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for the vote.
Okay. We're not even close to that yet, Alder. Alder Meadze, questions for staff?
Oh, no, I was just clarifying that when I spoke, I was speaking to the fact that.
Alder, we're, we're on questions for staff, not discussion yet.
Well, I'm clarifying since everybody wants to piggyback on what I say and.
Alder, you can clarify when we get to discussion. This is time for questions for staff.
All right.
Alder Furman, additional questions for staff?
I, I do. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to get, because I don't know what the updated numbers are. I wanted to know if Dave Schmiedeke can update us on what the proposed council office budget is. I know we made some amendments in finance and also what the proposed budget is for the Madison Police Department.
Director Schmiedeke?
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Furman, the police department's 2022 net appropriation after Finance Committee action would be a little over $84 million. And the common council's budget after Finance Committee action would be a little over $980,000.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Haverson, questions for staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. For Chief Davis.
Go ahead.
Are we, is this team currently meeting the demand for those calls that don't involve violence or weapons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harington McKinnney, questions for staff? No. All right. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions for staff. President Abbas, do you wish to speak to the alternate?
Yeah, thank you very much for an opportunity. So tonight, we heard a lot of different questions. I think a similar discussion happened at the Finance Committee. And Chief Davis, I appreciate you for explaining in detail. I also appreciate the regional amendment co-sponsored in this common council showing their full commitment to expressing their backing for CARES program, regardless of its $80,000 or in future $1 million or whatever it could be. I think so all of us is really committed to this particular cause and I can, I can say that with certainty. So let me first talk to this amendment and then I talk to why I proposed this amendment and explain a little more. So this particular amendment have two parts. One is community engagement position in common council office. That position will start in July and that saving will used to pay for, if this amendment passed, pay for CARES position. Second is the, instead of starting in July, we are starting in September. And that also give us good ample enough time because 2022, we have budget for CARES and the last three months would be perhaps by then we have a strategic work plan. And that could be also helpful to have additional, if that is a desire of the body, to give additional workforce for the CARES. Regarding common council, the intent was, our first step is we need to hire Chief of Staff as a head of the departments. The Chief of Staff process, my own experience as a council president and Lisa left in hiring our, hiring Metlan, it almost took four to six months. We have not hired, it's been over a year, Chief of Staff. So hiring process really take quite a bit of time. So once we hire Chief of Staff, then that person can really lead this effort of hiring and communication. And, and that's why that date, naturally, that date made a lot of sense to put July because that's kind of like the forecast is, and I think so that amount of time it's going to take. First hiring Chief of Staff and then this particular position. Now I will come to the, beside this amendment, now I will come to the content of it. So we heard from Chief Davis about strategic work plan and he was very clear in his, in his position. Putting more people at this moment is not going to solve what we are as a body trying to achieve because adding two staff does not mean they still need a supervision. And those supervision, we don't know who's going to supervise. There is need to be strategic plan need to be done. He also mentioned we need to slow down a little bit and evaluate how this is going to work and data and the time while the chief and the public health coordinator position, they are working to explore those angles. I think so it's very premature for us, regardless of our good intent as a body, to really put funding forward. Other thing I want to mention with this particular amendment, I know as a council president, I also attended a few meetings and I really appreciate everybody who worked on CARES pilot project, including Vice President Martin and Mayor Office regularly. Chief of Staff Mary Botary attended those meeting and keep me posted what is happening. I can say that with certainty. I can't really speak for the mayor, but I can say that if there was a strategic work plan done, the mayor would have put that in executive budget as part of her commitment to this particular program. It is here right now because additional data and information is required. This particular amendment is a compromise. I really want to take this notion of D-Fund Police and through D-Fund Police, we can really help CARES. That notion and the narrative in the community, I think so that is a wrong direction as a council we are taking. As Chief Davis mentioned, this perhaps in future, it need to be self-sufficient, it need to be self-sustaining, and it need to be a program which can move forward with, with enough dollar. And we as a council, we, once the strategic work plan is done, we need to really decide how we could move forward. It's going to polarize us more if we keep this D-Fund Police narrative and say, hey, through D-Fund, we are going to support the CARES. And, and matter of fact, Chief Barnes also expressed how minimum he's requesting, his request on Town of Madison was minimum, his department is already, he's working really hard with his vision. We need to give an opportunity to our chief to really, to give him opportunity to be successful. So, so with that, I, I truly think so this is a compromise where we achieve what this council want to do. But I, at the same time, I truly think so it is really premature. It is not totally cooked, but our commitment is absolutely behind the CARES and I think so it's a right step forward. And one thing I will also say with this strategic work plan, we really need to see what is the role of the county, how they can chip in. And perhaps Chief Davis mentioned about Eugene Organ, it's also funded by privately. For us to make this really successful, it's not going to only require defunding police. It's also going to require a broader collaboration and see how this whole program can be more sustainable and work in a healthy environment. So with that, I will really encourage the colleagues to, if they decided to move forward with this, not to take police budget out and, and, and move forward with this alternate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. Now we're on to further discussion. Alder Harington McKinnney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be supporting the, the alternate. And the reason that I'm not going to be supporting the alternate is that we are still allocating dollars to a, to the program. And I did read the research for the CARES program and I was really excited about it. It's got a 25-year positive history and, you know, we as a body, you know, will support this and make sure that it's sustainable. And so, so it's not a question of whether there is support. There is absolute support for the CARES program. I've heard a lot about the expertise of staff. We've been admonished over and over again that we don't listen to the experience of the staff. And Chief Davis is staff. I mean, he has expressed. And Chief Davis is staff. I mean, he has expressed several times that it's too early to determine the what, where, how the program will expand and what that looks like. And so, but we have rushed over that. And what I heard that was missing was that we needed to analyze the data, have a strategic plan, a coordination of service, supervision, wraparound services, investment in the community and follow-up acute care. And the vision of not doing any harm. Not that this program is viable and we should make, make sure it is sustainable and funds go toward it, but we have heard the chief said he'll accept the money if it's taken. And then this amendment is along the same vein. So I am not going to be supporting it. I am going to be listening to what the chief said. And for those who said it's not about the police budget, it is about the police budget. Let's be clear. And especially when I heard an Alder said that the chief, the police budget is, is X amount of dollars. I mean, you know, that's not, that's not the point. The point is that we want a strong, sustainable program like CARES. And that, that, you know, mental health is an issue. We've seen it in so many times and it really does need our attention. But if we're gonna give it attention, give it the attention that it needs, let's not do it piecemeal like this. And so I'm not gonna be supporting the alternative. The alternative, excuse me.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Miyadze? Did you wanna, you were next in the queue for discussion? You're muted, Alder.
I'll get back in the queue. Can you all come back to me?
Absolutely, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't be supporting the alternate either, but for different reasons, as you might guess, than my colleague. I appreciate what Vice President Martin had to say about the thinking that went into the planning for CARES. And that it was always thought that this would be evaluated in real time. Real time meaning that as data comes forward, you'd be able to evaluate it on a regular basis and make determinations as to what is working and what is not. The difference between this alternate and the original amendment is a difference of ninety days. The suggestion is that, in the original amendment, for a program that began in September, that it would be reasonable ten months hence for staff to have come up with a sufficient number of planning along the lines of strategy, a strategic plan to determine where to allocate one more team. It may not be a complete five-year plan. That's not necessary if you are making determinations and evaluations in real time, as Vice President Martin said was stipulated from the very beginning. But you can have enough of a plan to decide how to allocate those additional resources. It's also reasonable, I believe, in that ten-month period to, to, for us as the legislating body to put that expectation on staff that you have this goal by the end of the second quarter of this next year to figure out how you want to spend this money. Would it be adding a different shift within the same district? Would it be expanded to other parts of the city? Would it be adding, adding a combination of hours and different regions in the city? But we're not talking about doing this in the first quarter of 2022. We're talking about starting this in the third quarter of 2022. And regarding the funding source, President Abbas mentioned that this was somehow or another part of defunding the police, as if this was part of a broader rhetorical statement. Well, let's look at what we're talking about here. We're talking about less than one-tenth of one percent of the overall police budget allocated to a program which ostensibly will reduce the burden upon police staff. That this will free up the time of officers to, and reduce the, the burden on, on, on police staff. We know this. This is, so it's not defunding police in some kind of negative sense. It's about allocating resources efficiently because we know that we should not be asking police to do things that they're less equipped to do than perhaps another program, another entity. So I would suggest that another possibility that could be handled through a resolution is that PSRC, one of our committees, the Public Safety Review Committee, could ask for monthly data from MPD and from CARES and be able to do a cost benefit analysis to see if the impact are, are the number of mental health calls that our MPD is taking on being slightly reduced through this. And then strategically beginning to think of how we can move this forward because you do this in real time. You do not need to come up with a five-year strategic plan in order to make incremental progress if you're committed to the success of a program. So this idea of slowing it down is actually a, a, a statement of that we don't have confidence in the success or that we're on the right path. And I think most clearly we are. And I ask you to reject the alternate and go back to the original amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro call?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm first of all gonna say thanks God that I'm going after Alder Evers. So maybe I'm just gonna take a few minutes to maybe replay what he just said. I'm not gonna repeat what he's saying, but a hundred percent in agreement with every single word. So I only have one question. It's actually for you, Chair. So the, the common council community engagement position, that's a brand new position that we put in the budget that we put on this, on this twenty twenty-two budget. Is that correct? Brand new.
Correct.
Okay, so if we pass the budget tonight and that position is there, I understand the funds are for twenty twenty-two, but does that prevent HR from starting to do outreach to get, to get applicants on the queue to, to hire for that position?
Alder, I don't think we have anybody from HR here, but I can briefly say that, no, if, if a position is in the budget, it is possible for the hiring department, in this case it would be the common council office, to begin the process of putting together the position description, posting the position, getting applications. They just would not be able to have a start date before January of twenty-two.
Correct. That's what I was thinking. So we could start, we can pretty much start immediately and have someone fill the role in January first. So having that understanding, thank you for clarifying, is just makes, I am extremely surprised on how quickly some people are willing to push back or to put delays on a position that is going, which main focus is gonna be community engagement. I, I mean, I, if I'm not mistaken, throughout the, the Finance Committee discussions, I keep on hearing that you guys have been talking about this position for years and how important this position is for the city council and how important it is for us to find ways to engage the community. But then yet, here we are fighting to just push that a few months down, just on the, with the clear intent of avoiding taking money from another agency's budget. So that I am not gonna support this alternate, again echoing other tax input. And keeping again in mind for all of us, that this position was really, really important for, was my understanding, all twenty of us. And I don't see why we need to sacrifice it on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. And my apologies, HR Director Donahue is in fact here. I'm not suggesting we go back to questions for staff. I just don't want you to think that he was delinquent. Alder Carter, discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, where, where, where do I start? I guess the first thing I wanna say, because it's been a constant theme this year, saying that our staff are the experts. And all of a sudden tonight, we are the experts in mental health. Trust our staff is another theme that has been all year. Well, tonight, we can trust our staff. And yet we don't. I think the most important thing about this program that we're missing, it's not about the money. It's about doing it right. It's about setting it up right. It's about getting the collaboration that we need. It's about looking at ways that we can get local hospitals to reserve beds instead of going to Winnebago. It's about making sure we have follow-up visits, which are vital. It's more about, it's, excuse me, it's less about getting another car and additional staff. CARES is very important to me. And it's important to a lot of people, a lot of our residents in this city. I suggest you watch a documentary of San Francisco who just added two more cars for a total of six. And what they said about expansion. I won't be supporting this alternate. And by the way, we all have the ability to do alternates without being shamed. And I won't be supporting the amendment. One of the things that Chief Davis said that I think is, you know, mind-blowing is having CARES as a separate public safety entity. Working together with MFD and MPD. That goal, which I hope it does come to fruition, would be fantastic to have them as a separate entity and to be able to do some of the other things that he listed, which I'm not gonna list here. The amendment doesn't take in effect that Chief Davis talked about hiring not only an analyst, but someone who could construct the structure and future of CARES. And it's another thing that's vitally important. I haven't heard anyone say, slow it down, but I've heard every one of you say, let's do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry, discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't going to speak to this, but I'm actually quite surprised by the amount of my peers who have sponsored the amendment and are not voting for it tonight. So I just wanna speak to earlier tonight, the first, first thing we did in our meeting today was unanimously approve an amendment about violence prevention. We didn't spend any time questioning, discussing, or even taking a roll call on this issue. It was unanimous. I believe that's because we all see that our community has an increasingly desperate need to prevent violence and address the innumerable harms it causes. The work behind coming to that unanimous unquestioned approval earlier was challenging and laborious, especially as a new Alder. But the overall theme that rose for me was a larger system failure. We have nonprofits and organizers needing to answer countless hours of questions about their outcomes, about their experience, and what they produce that's deserving of funding while they fight over minimal pots of money to provide life-saving and sustaining services. In this case, with crisis intervention and prevention services, there hasn't been an RFP process for this type of funding in over five years. Seven million dollars in requests came in for a pot of money that only held one point six million. Yet, certain sectors such as the police receive increased budgets year by year. And we question why we grill them about their outcomes, especially as a body that toots itself on community engagement and reducing crime and preventing violence. To me, it's, it's not about defunding the police. It's almost in the same token as I've heard others allude to tonight of, we care about CARES, but we care about addressing our systemic, systematic failures and addressing devastating program. And at times, organizations ending completely due to lack of funding. Tonight, this is about actually producing outcomes that indicate we do need to provide health and human services. Our community is suffering. We are losing people that look like me and my family and those that I love on a daily basis. And it doesn't have to be that way in such a resource-rich place. So again, if we're going to put our mouths, our money where our mouths is, we need to provide action that we do want change and we are willing to change and be upstanding through uncomfortable positions. This to me is about, again, meeting community needs while also responding to our responsibility to keep our community safe and understanding what, what role law enforcement plays in that. So I will not be supporting this amendment. And I hope that we all continue to move towards how to make sure that those we know are deserving of funding and doing the work in the community can continue to do that and not compete against each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miyadze?
So it was just yesterday that I mentioned that we should definitely use a community outreach person to be able to give out low-income bus passes to communities that really deserve it and really need it. Starting with, you know, the west side that doesn't even have a location. Even talked about the possibility of even using that services to, to even talked about all the bus passes were being used up. So the fact of the matter is that we're not using those funds to do that. So definitely, you know, I think that this amendment definitely should be implemented. And also too, I do, we do all know that we need the CARES program. That is very important. But also, you know, we know that we need to release some of the burden off of, you know, officers by using the CARES program. But you know, given the fact that there is a violent crimes and that are increasing in the community and that, you know, we need a holistic approach, you know, that includes prevention and intervention. And you know, Chief Davis is an expert and you know, I really care about what Chief Davis said and means a lot to me. But not at the expense of the police, that we're actually asking to protect our community. So with that said, you know, I would be a supporter of the amendment. Just for the simple fact that how yesterday I asked for the, for the community engagement person to be able to give out passes to the marginalized community that we know that are not being served with these passes. These passes aren't given to faith communities that don't know anything about. They're not given to the, the NRTs. They're not given to, but yet we went ahead and said yesterday that not to approve that. So I'll definitely be supporting this amendment.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Well, where do I start? This is extremely triggering, this whole discussion. It's frustrating as hell. Um, I'll save some of my comments about the original amendment because I have hopes that this would not, that this substitute will not pass. Obviously, I don't support it. I ran for this office this, after this time last year, listening to some of you all who are incumbents labor over tedious decisions about police. And I'm seeing the same thing again. How we can labor over one-tenth of one percent of the one department that receives the most funding in our city, that receives over eighty million dollars. And we can't even move a drop in that bucket to our community. That I want to say pisses me off. It pisses me off. Um, the fact that we can see, that we know that more than one in five people fatally shot by the police have a mental illness. The fact that we know that people on this council who are black and brown people can see other black and brown people get shot, see people like Elijah McLean, can see people like George Floyd, can see people like Breonna Taylor, who when I look at that woman, I see myself. And still say, "We can't move this drop of the bucket." What the, what are we doing? That's insane. And we can acknowledge that maybe we don't want to piecemeal, take funding from the police department. And to that I say, from what I understand, the goal of CARES is to alleviate pressure on the police department that they are responding to mental health calls. So that the police department can focus more on what, um, on issues that they need to and so that we can have sent, be sending the right people to these calls. So tell me why it doesn't make sense, tell me how it doesn't make sense to take, to keep funding in the police department that they're using to respond to mental health, that, to help respond to mental health calls and not move into CARES. I don't understand where that makes sense. And to this whole thing about defunding the police, that's more triggering as hell. Because when we say defund the police, the backhand side of that is refund the community. Funding the community, the, the community of people that came out and cried and, and wanted help for thems, for themselves, that wanted people to respond properly to their calls. So if you're confused about how funding works and where we should be putting funding regarding CARES, then clearly you are not listening to the community. The premise of CARES is to alleviate pressure on the police department. That is why I'm not supporting this alternate. That is why, um, and on top of that, it's really sad that we are only talking about a drop in the bucket when there's so much more work to do.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vidiver?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, so a couple of things going through my mind. Um, first of all is that, um, the amendment asks for a budgetary allotment for this program. That doesn't mean that it has to be spent. Obviously, all of our departments want to spend the money that they have. But if for some reason there was an indication that we didn't have sufficient data, then there wasn't the need, the fire department doesn't have to spend this money. The money, we, what we're saying is we're making it available for this purpose. I cannot support the substitute, um, and I'm going to give a little anecdote and so apologize, uh, in advance for that. But I used to work the university and, um, I ran a research program and we had another program that was our main sort of underwriter of our program. And one day that program leader called me up and said, "You know, our budget is tight. We're going to cut your budget by thirty percent." And that was our core budget. That was a huge cut to us. But what she described was that we were one of the bigger programs that was being supported by that core funding. So if she were to go and cut a program that was one, one and a half, two people, that would be the end of that program. We had room in our budget to cut, and so that's why the decision was made to cut our budget. So I see this as a very common sense approach, that the police budget is the largest budget in our largest portion of our budget. And so if we're going to look for cost savings, that is a reasonable place. And the cost savings are, you know, as Chief Barnes mentioned, really from not being able to fill positions, um, which obviously we hope to be temporary. We want to be able to have our force be, um, appropriately as what, as the city needs. And the other piece that I want to say is that while we were talking with staff, I just looked at, um, the wonderful information that Chief Barnes does supply. If you don't look at his blog about priority calls and so forth, in five days, there were nine mental health calls outside the central district. So if we don't think that there is a CARES need, I would say we do have the data to show that there is. So I'm going to vote for Amendment 11 and not the substitute. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster?
Mayor, uh, you know, it's often said that a, a budget is a statement of values. And the, uh, author of the, the alternate suggested that the underlying amendment is a kind of misguided, um, attempt to defund the police. And so I, I think, you know, take that at face value. And this alternate is an attempt to defund community engagement. And I don't know what kind of values y'all have, but for me, this one is really clear. And I do not support the alternate.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to say that obviously I'm going to be supporting this amendment. Um, I think Alder Bennett really hit the, um, nail on the head when she said the police budget is eighty million dollars. And we're asking for eighty-six thousand dollars. Like, that's not that much money, um, compared to eighty million dollars. That's like pennies to a dollar. So I really think that this is important, that we pass this now. Give them that money and make sure that it's there because with this program, nobody knows what we're going to need. Nobody's going to know how this program is going to take off, but it's better to have the money there now instead of, oh, three months down the lane, we need, we need cars, we need support people, we need mental health workers, and then have to go and try to find this money by squeezing blood out of a turnip. You know what I'm saying? So we really need to go ahead and approve this amendment. I ask that my fellow colleagues support this amendment and not the alternative. And, and, and let's just get this done and, and really put our money where our mouth is. If we support our community and we support our constituents and we want to make sure that we're sending the right professionals to the right job, I believe that Amendment 11 is the right one for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder Conklin. President Abbas, further discussion?
Yes, I know. That's my second try, second opportunities. Thanks. Uh, so let me talk about my values as we are here now talking about values of cosponsors and alternatives. I think that's important for me to also express my values too. So it's been three years I am in common council. If you pick up the budget, uh, our budget priorities shows where our values are. So I will encourage community as well as my colleague to look where I put my name as a cosponsor. So you will see my values. This election when I ran, uh, again, people talk about my values and on social media and said I am, uh, uh, talk about I am pro-development, I'm developer, which I don't think so, being pro or anti is anything good or bad. It's all depend on the perspective of a person, how they see. Uh, you saw on a remish form on my position on environmental justice. You saw an issue of F-35, my position on environmental justice. As an Alder, I fight for it, fight for people of color who's disproportionately impacted, fight for people who look like me. So really, it's very troubling to see portraying like, on value basis, I don't care bi-pa communities extremely offensive and troubling to me. I would also say issues of homelessness, issues of economic development, issues of environmental justice, issue of public safety. We're twenty people, we could have twenty approaches. We could have twenty ways to think differently, but that does not mean somebody can question the value and integrity of a person and say, "Hey, your value does not align with the value of your constituent or the values of the city of Madison." That is extremely offensive because I represent my constituent regardless of criticism I faced during election campaign. I'm elected by my constituent and they trusted my leadership. Also, I would say, I can't change mind of my colleague or, uh, it's, everybody have their free will, free choice. I can't change their mind. If their mind is about defund police, so be it. Uh, that's okay. It is not sustainable. That's what I'm trying to say. Having, living, growing and raised in Pakistan and Asia, Asian continent, working experience also living in and studying in Europe, also working, living in America. I've seen the world. And I have my fair chance of discrimination, racism. Also, uh, after nine eleven, faced a lot of Islamic phobia, uh, a lot of discrimination. I have my own fair share of stuff which I've been through, but I'm not here to discuss that. But my, I have a perspective which I think that there is a path forward in the middle where we could create a balance. I am not confused. I'm very clear. Let me make this really clear. I am not confused what I'm saying. There is a path forward. We ask too much to our police to provide mental health, to provide other services because we as a community, not me, Alder Abbas, not me. We as a community, previous councils, or council before councils, we as a community never put a funding in community development or other, other plans. We ask police to do everything and then, which is not part of their job and mistakes happen. And like in any department, there are good and bad people. We just come after things. And which is understandable and I completely get that. It's, uh, there are brutality out there and there are discrimination and there are racism. And we need to address. That's our job. Many time I mentioned that we need to look into alternative system, that three-one-one could be a path forward. I had a discussion with Chief that perhaps if we can fund more in police, we could have virtual visits. People want to get here. My constituent, they call, I have this issue or that issue. There could be way to reimagine public safety with the creativeness, with innovation. That does not mean my values are changed or I am basically against anti-bi-pa community and my amendment and my actions are hurting them because I'm part of it. I found it really offensive, to be honest. Also, I would say, I tried to find a path forward. Perhaps my colleague did not like it. That's totally fine. Like, hey, this narrative about defund police, I totally support here, by the way. There's, and you go back, check the Finance Committee amendment last year. I was one of the cosponsor where we took the money from the police academy. So you can't really come and ask me, "Hey, you are not questioning my integrity." So please, check that out. What I'm trying to do here is, Chief Davis mentioned about, perhaps in the bigger strategic plan, we need to check with UW Extension, UW, Dane County. There need to be broader collaboration. If the message is given to the community through defund police, we can create the CARE program. I can tell you that that's not going to happen because that's not practically possible. Community also does not, perhaps many of Alders definitely know, but community at large perhaps doesn't know. We as a council cannot fire or hire any police officer. It's Police and Fire Commission role. What can be done is what we are doing here is giving direction. This money could be allocated from saving account or somebody retired and it's up to the chief to decide where to find. And putting chief, which is really trying hard to reimagine our public safety, asking a minimum help in a budget instead of fourteen officer, asking only eight. We also putting his department, his department more all also in question. And I completely understand if, if you don't care about, you know, uh, the police department, that's understandable. No offense taken, uh, that's your opinion and your all policymaker represent, your constituent. I do believe so. There is a path forward and I do want to make sure, please do not question my integrity, do not question my values. I can happy to share my record with all of you and send you an email, which I think sponsor. If the budget is your criteria to see what is the person value integrity is, I'm happy to provide that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. The motion is the, uh, Alder Carter. I, we are definitely going to have a roll call, Alder Carter.
Thank you.
Uh, we're having a little bit of trouble hearing you, Alder. It might be an issue with your headset. Um, the motion on, before us is the alternate on Amendment 11. All those in favor? I. Those opposed? No, as your name is called and the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Figueroa Cole?
No.
No? Foster?
No.
No? Furman? Sorry, I didn't catch that.
No.
No? Halverson?
No.
No? Harrington McKinney?
No.
No? Heck?
No.
No? Lemmer?
Aye.
Aye? Martin?
No.
No? Miazze?
Aye.
Aye? Verveer?
No.
No? Vidiver?
No.
No? Waelia?
Aye.
Aye? Abbas?
Aye.
Aye? Alboris?
No.
No? Benford?
No.
No? Bennett?
No.
No? Carter?
Aye.
Aye? Conklin?
No.
No? Curry?
No.
No? Evers?
No.
No. That's five ayes and fifteen noes. With fifteen noes, the alternate fails. We're back to the original motion, uh, on Amendment 11. Is there any additional discussion on the original motion? Seeing Alder Bennett.
Sorry. Hold on. Stay. Oh, can you give me a second?
Alder, uh, if you want to take your spot out of the queue, we'll go on. Alder Harrington McKinney, discussion on Amendment 11.
Um, I will not be, um, supporting Amendment 11. And the reason that I will not be supporting, um, Amendment 11 is the same reason that I didn't support the alternate. We have heard Chief Davis, who is highly respected and he who is highly respected and he he speaks what's so at the finance committee and again tonight. He has stipulated why um uh uh why he had concerns about putting money into the program without having a um a strategic plan in place. Professionally, he said that he had a problem. We have totally missed that. We have totally disregarded that. We are not listening because what's primarily circling here is the eighty million dollars that the police department gets. And so when you say it's not about defunding the police, I don't even like that term. It's not defunding the police. It is moving dollars out of the police budget where other community uh organizations and entities can take it over. I get that. But when you have the chief uh 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 Chief Davis systematically goes through the fact that this program can work and you're not listening to that really concerns me. And so as one of the alder says, I get pissed off as well. I get pissed off because what we're doing is not listening to the 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 professional person that has spoke why we're not ready for this. Supporting cares is not the issue. There is absolute support for cares. I hear about the stories of individuals who have mental health issues and are put in jail. I hear about the stories, right? But I also hear that we want to get this right. And so as we're going along, um there's funding there. We need to determine how we're going to fund it, how much we're going to fund it, where does it need to be um uh uh increased? And and all of those pieces that goes into as we go along making this the strongest mental health pro uh program that there is. And rather than piecemealing it and throwing money at it, let us let's at least listen to the ones that are boots on the ground. That's, you know, we caught, and I'm just going to be transparent. We call hell about the purpose-built shelter because we did not listen to the professionals. Caught hell because we're not looking at um what the professionals and what the staff said about dairy drive. And so but when it comes to this issue where the um where the chief has been so consistent in his reasoning why we're not ready, the program is not ready for additional funding, you're not even listening to that. And so I am not going to support it. I don't really care what I'm called because that, I mean, that doesn't define me. You can call me black, brown, or purple. Don't care about that. But I heard what Chief Davis said. He said it consistently and it makes sense to do it and he wants to do it right. So I will not be supporting this at all.
Vice President Martin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I I am supporting this. Um and as you know, this project has been something important to me and something that I've worked on um uh for quite a while. I very much disagree with the idea that supporting money then means that we are just throwing money at a situation and it's just going to be spent really nilly. We're putting this money out so that when the the program manager, the program director, the person who's working in public health to look that that professional person is going to take a look at the data that we've gotten, at any other data that he or she or they may need in order to come up with suggestions. What this amendment does means that they aren't going to have to come back for a bureaucratic, you know, another several hours of us talking about all of this. The money will be there. The plan will be in the process of being made and the the program manager will be the one who who ultimately says, yes, this this is the money, this is what we need it for. We need more, you know, either more people or, you know, how we are going to expand this. Because, you know, as you guys know, this is only currently operating during specific daytime hours in the central district. And it's good that that we that this program seems to be meeting that demand. But this program is not just the central district. Um and I don't know if I was getting phone calls from people because, you know, my name was on this. But I got, I consistently get calls uh from constituents and non constituents asking about when this is going to go wider because they have people that they're worried worried about or something happened and they wish that cares could have come. And and this the data that that the the program director will be taking a look at will determine how this money ultimately gets used. In order to grow this in the most efficient as well as uh obviously data-driven, but also again, I say the word nimble again, um that we are able to kind of uh make changes or little tweaks even that might, you know, help a little bit here but gives us more data over here, you know, um that that's the reasoning behind that. So um with that, I will be boarding, willing to support this. Um and this is absolutely no, no comment on the leadership of either of our chiefs of the work that they and their departments do. Um I just think that this is the best way for us to be able to grow this program the way we need to um i- in the future.
Thank you, Vice President Martin. Alder Bennett?
Okay, thank you for your patience, everyone. And I will do my best to keep this concise following this brief anecdote. Um when I was growing up as a kid, my dad and I we'd watch um action movies together. My favorite was always Enter the Dragon um with Bruce Lee. And in this movie, um Bruce Lee's teacher says it's basically like destroy the illusion and you'll receive the true image. And when I think about this in council, we have a tendency to elude ourselves, shroud ourselves in illusions of doubt and concern and uncertainty. Not this is that this isn't valid. Um however, when we take this doubt, we can acknowledge that we are left with what Chief Davis said. He said, yes, this additional funding will be a benefit to the program. Yes, the police or sorry, the fire department will take this money and they will use it wisely. And yes, the additional funding will help put people on the street to build, to help gain that data, to help gain that information from the pilot to build that strategic plan. So when I think about it, I don't think about it as we're not listening as we're just throwing money willy-nilly to cares that we're all excited about. I see it as we're supporting our program that we are confident in as moving a drop in the bucket to a program that we are all excited and confident in. And I am absolutely certain that this funding will be of a bet of benefit to cares, to the pilot and overall success of the program.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaroa Cole?
Thank you, Chair. So yes, I mean, I will, I will definitely um echo that. I think we are listening to the chief. Chief questions, very specific questions were asked about the program and there were admissions done along along the way, as Alder Bennett just mentioned. So I'm, I I listened to the to to what he what it was said, if that's um just in case I was put into question. What this um resolution does is takes, to me, the most important thing that this resolution does is to open a line item on the budget for this program to access for years to come. So right now it's just, it's, there's no, they're not even this this will allow for the fire department to budget for it on the two thousand twenty-three year and and on and on. And like Albe Vida Ver was saying, we we, the money is allocated for this and the program is flexible enough to make a determination on when the when the funds uh can be used that can be can be can be um expensed. Um one other thing that I heard uh from Chief Davis is that on December sixth, we're going to have this um program director or program manager hired. So it seemed like I'm putting a lot of faith that that position will actually create more clarity on the route that this program will take. Um definitely, we it needs a project manager, someone that can create the roadmap for these uh for the processes needed to to um serve the people in Madison. So that is not too far off. That's less than a month month from now. And like uh to echo all Alder Martins, um Vice President Martin's comments, the money will be there. They will be able to to develop a robust plan with the value with with a dollar amount in it. They'll have to wait for another amendment, for another budget um change to come to us to to then create a vision and say, I need this much money. They might have to come to us because they may need more money. I don't know. But at least they have a founding um ha- they have a structure in place to be a line item that is recognized for this um for this particular program. So I am definitely voting in favor of this and I am looking forward to see this pro- program succeed on the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Figaroa Cole. I have no other alders in the queue uh wishing to speak on this item. Uh President Abbas?
Yes, you were almost saying no and I just raised hand. Will be really quick. Appreciate that. So the care funding, uh I absolutely agree with all of our colleagues here about how important it is for the mental health and how how it can help our community at large. In the spirit of the cares, I will support this amendment, this particular uh stuff in front of us, but I will still believe it is a bad policy to not really work with the staff and look into the strategic plan and think about how we could create a comprehensive financial structure around it. Again, I would say taking money from the police is not a right direction and it's not sustainable and it is not possible. Cares might be in future need million dollar, two million dollar, three million dollar. We need to create policy through data-driven. Chief Davis said there's no data. But I do understand the intent is to really promote care. And I totally agree with the intent, but the underlying issue is we really need to, as a policymaker, we really need to, this defund narrative, we need to separate that. How we fund the communities. Otherwise, we're not going to bring people together. We're going to keep running in a separate direction and keep arguing with each other, with community members. And we're never going to achieve what we want to achieve in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, President Abbas. Now I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak. On amendment eleven, all those in favor, I. Uh all those opposed, no, as your name is called and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Figaroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Foster?
Aye.
Aye. Furman?
Aye.
Aye. Halverson?
No.
No. Harrington McKinney?
No.
No. Heck?
Aye.
Aye. Lemmer?
Aye.
Aye. Martin?
Aye.
Aye. Miazze?
No.
No. Vervier?
Aye.
Aye. Vidiver?
Aye.
Aye. Waelia?
No.
No. Abbas?
Aye.
Aye. Alboris?
No.
No. Benford? Benford? Alder Benford, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. What's your vote? Aye. Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Carter?
No.
No. Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Curry?
Yes.
Aye. Evers?
Aye.
Aye. So that's fourteen ayes and six nos.
With fourteen ayes, that amendment passes. I know we are overdue for a break, but I would really like to um dispense with this issue altogether. Can I get a motion to take uh capital amendment number eight off the table, please? I'll move that. Sorry. Vice President Martin will move that. Is there a second?
I second.
Alder Conklin will second. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of taking uh capital amendment eight off the table? Alder Miazze, your hand is up. Is that an objection? Okay, uh seeing no objection, we'll take capital amendment eight uh off the table. Alder Furman, a motion?
Move move approval?
Uh Alder Conklin?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve capital amendment number eight. This is in the fire department regarding a cares vehicle. Um is there, are there questions for staff? Seeing no questions for staff, Alder Furman, would you like to speak to this?
I'm sure, Mayor. I'll just be quick. This is a a corresponding capital amendment to fund vehicle. Um it's important when we have this individual, I have a wait. This um so this will help with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion. Uh is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of capital amendment number eight? Seeing no objection, uh that amendment will pass unanimously. And now, would somebody like to move a recess?
Move motion to recess ten minutes.
Uh moved and Alder Conklin will second uh ten-minute recess. It's eight twenty now. That would put us at eight thirty. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of recess? Seeing no objection and many cameras going off, we are recessed until eight thirty. We're at 8:30, so I'll ask the council members to come back, please, and to turn your video on. And I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Furman?
Present.
Halverson?
Present.
Harrington McKinney? Harrington McKinney? All right, I'll come back. Heck?
Here.
Lemmer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Miazze?
Here.
Fervier?
Here.
Viver?
Here.
Waelia?
Here.
Abbas? Abbas? Alboris? Alboris? Benford?
Here.
Bennett?
Here.
Carter? Carter? Conklin?
Present.
Curry?
Here.
Evers?
Here.
Harrington McKinney? Abbas? I can see her waving, Harrington McKinney. Abbas, are you there? Alboris? Carter? Madam Mayor, we have quorum. Thank you. I'm just letting President Abbas know that I think he can't hear us. All right, so... President Abbas, can you confirm that you can hear us? I think that's a no. All right, so Alder Martin, while we've worked to get President Abbas on audio, can I have a motion, please, to take Amendment 10 off the table?
Sure thing. I move that we take Amendment 10 off the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
There you are, President Abbas. So, moved and seconded to take Amendment 10 off of the table. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of taking that off the table? Seeing none, we'll record that vote. And on Amendment 10, President Abbas, a motion, please.
Move motion to adopt the substitute, which you all received by finance staff at 6:00 p.m. There's slight modification in that substitute.
Second. Moved, and I was going to ask Alder Benford if he would second that, but Alder Martin will do.
I'll take it back if Alder Benford wants to second.
I think we're good. And then Director Schmidke, can you give us a check on the levy and the impact of this amendment?
Certainly, Mayor. Right now, there remains about $57,275. This substitute amendment to Amendment 10 would increase the levy by $56,317. So, that's a difference of about $930, $40.
Thank you, Director Schmidke. Sorry, I have a lot of post-its and papers going here, people. So, then, on the substitute Amendment 10, are there questions for staff? Sorry, this is regarding the Community Connectors in the Department of Civil Rights. Are there questions for staff? President Abbas?
Yeah, the question for Norm Davis. Norm, could you please give a little background about Language Access Program and the need of this particular position?
Sure. Thank you. It's nice to be with you all tonight. So, our Language Access Program, as many of you may know, was adopted by the city back in 2017. And there are some unique features of our Language Access Plan, such as the requirement that there be no machine-only translation. Part of our intent in making sure that everyone that's seeking to access city services has meaningful access to our services is that we don't want to just provide inconsistent or unclear interpretation or translation. And so, part of that intent in not allowing the machine only is to make sure that we, as an organization, are giving good, clear communication to individuals that are not, that don't speak English well. And so, we've known for a long time that there's some dissonance between how individuals that speak English and individuals that don't speak English well are able to access city services. And we've, actually dating back to the original Language Access Plan, we identified the need for city staff to be able to provide that one-to-one contact, that one-to-one service to individuals looking to access city services. It's important that the community members are able to receive services in the way that they need them. And this is something that we really, was really brought home for us during the pandemic. We're still in the pandemic. But, you know, we needed to get information out quickly, and we needed to get information out very clearly. And we are able to activate new resources, new methods to speaking to communities that don't speak English well, so that they were getting good information in a time where, you know, having access to good health information was absolutely critical. And so, we talked these ideas through with our Neighborhood Resource Teams, with our Racial Equity and Social Justice Teams, and with members of our Latinx Community Engagement Team. And we heard and asked for some staff members that could really touch, have that more intimate connection with the community, and not only provide interpretation or translation, but really be a trusted source for engagement and support. And so, we started looking into what that could possibly look like. And we looked at what Boulder, Colorado was doing, what Somerville, Massachusetts was doing, and a few models emerged. And we thought that it would be ideal to have representation for our top three non-English languages, Spanish, Hmong, and Chinese Mandarin, and really be able to connect to our communities in a new way and in a more, as I said, intimate way. And so, we're really looking to use these positions to help build trust in our communities. It's an experience to not speak the language and yet have a need to access services. And something that's occurred to us even recently is we have 30-some different city agencies, and there are different, what do I want to say? There's sort of different language that our agencies use. And so, it's really important to have someone that can connect you, someone that understands your culture, so that you can get the benefit of those services, just like someone that speaks English. So, that's really the intent behind these three positions. The three positions are at 60% because we want to honor the work that these connectors are doing and be able to provide them with benefits. 60% is the threshold for being eligible for benefits, city benefits. And we wanted to right-size this. These aren't full-time positions right now because the models that we've looked at, you know, range in terms of the utility for the connectors. You know, some connectors work three, four hours a month, and some work, you know, maybe 12 hours a week. And so, we wanted to start off this work with some part-time positions but are permanent that offer benefits.
Thank you. Norm, I really appreciate. Could you also explain what is your department vision of this particular job, especially about project base and also about other DCCs, ALRs, and other committees? What type of services they can provide?
Sure, sure. Sure, sure. So right now, you know, we have a budget for services that we procure. We're very grateful to have the budget item to procure the interpretation and translation services. But those resources get used every year. We're always overrunning that budget. And, you know, so when there are special projects, those special projects can, you know, take up a good portion of that fund. Whereas if we have community and cultural connectors, those individuals can be assigned to special projects, such as the upcoming attachments of adjacent communities, to really make sure that those changes happen as seamlessly as possible. We'll have individuals that are on staff that are available to various projects. And I should also mention that in the models that we've seen, these community and cultural connectors oftentimes don't have standard office hours. There's a need for, I should say, there's a focus on the need of the community. And if that's later in the evening, if that's whatever time of the weekend, these connectors are there to really meet the community, where the community members, where they are. As it relates to boards, commissions, and committees, you know, we are able, through some of the contracts that we have, to have interpreters assigned to the various meetings. And, you know, sometimes there are last-minute requests, last-minute concerns, and it's sometimes difficult to get interpreters in a short window of time. But, you know, we'll continue to use those contracted services. But, you know, these community connectors will be there and available for special meetings, special projects. Those kind of ad hoc requests that come up, we'll be able to better respond with those services with in-house staff.
Thank you very much. I might come back again for questions. I see quite a bit of hand raise, so thank you.
Thank you, President Abbas. Alder Conklin, questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Norm, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well. So I was just wondering, do we have any sort of numerical breakdown of the population of who speaks Spanish and who speaks Hmong and Chinese Mandarin in Dane County?
Yes, we do. There are a few sources of statistics that we have. And the first thing I'll say, that the data at more of a municipal level is a lot harder to get for languages, when we talk about languages that are spoken at home. The statewide data is the most accurate that we have. But there is statistical analysis, data that, I'm sorry, statistical atlas data that we've accessed. And so regarding the ability to speak English, forty percent of individuals that speak Spanish at home, and about forty-point-three percent of individuals that speak Hmong at home, and about fifty-two percent of those that speak Chinese Mandarin speak English less than very well in Wisconsin. And so that's statewide. When we look at population, though, that doesn't always relate to the linguistic need. There's evidence to support that some language speakers have more of a need of support in order to speak English than other languages. But suffice it to say that there is ACS data that shows that eleven-point-eight percent of the Madison population speak a language other than English at home. And so it's within that group. So about nineteen percent of that group are Spanish speakers that speak English less than very well. About forty-five percent of that population are individuals speaking Asian or Pacific Islander languages, and they speak English less than very well. Through our work about four years ago in developing the Language Access Program, we identified Spanish, Hmong, and traditional Chinese Mandarin as the top three languages other than English. And we also heard from the Tibetan community around ensuring that we have language access services available for them. The fact is, we have language access services available for every language through the resources that we use, whether it's our contracted interpretation and translation services or through the language line that the City of Madison uses. We provide the service to make sure that anyone, regardless of what language they speak, when they come to the City of Madison for services, that they're going to get served.
Okay, so, well, I guess the main question is, is though, I think as we know, like in school systems and various neighborhoods and things like that, in my experience, has been majority of the people speak Spanish, followed by Hmong and Chinese Mandarin. So I'm just wondering why there's more time and money being put into the Hmong and the Chinese Mandarin when we know that we have like a bigger population of Spanish-speaking individuals here in Dane County, Madison?
Yeah, and so I don't know that there's more being put into the Hmong and Chinese Mandarin. But the ideal for us, excuse me, was to be able to hire these three community, excuse me, these three community and cultural connectors, serving each of the communities, making sure that we're able to establish those relationships with each community. Part of the plan for these connectors is it's all about the relationships that we build. We can translate materials, we can provide interpretation services, but we need to, we don't always know that the communities are getting the services that they need in the way that they need them. So part of the work of the community and cultural connectors is to help us as a city understand how to best not only reach, but to respond to our various communities.
Okay, so, but would that also delay the Spanish-speaking position until April? Is that correct?
Correct. This amendment would not allow any of the connector positions to start until around the middle of April. And
Go ahead.
Yeah, and so these are new roles within the city. Given the time of year, we know that, just based on a regular recruitment process, these positions, none of these positions would start, you know, day one, January 2022. And we want to be thoughtful, and we want to apply our equity principles to the recruitment, to the hire. And I know that that will take a little bit of time. And so in my mind, it's not far-fetched that these positions start, you know, around the end of the first quarter in 2022.
Okay, I think this might be my last question. So when we're saying "community connectors," and you're saying a lot of people don't speak English very well, is one of the jobs going to not only be able to translate in their own language, but also help facilitate in the English language as well?
Also help to facilitate in English? Can you say a little more about what you mean with that?
Like, help them with their English, you know what I'm saying? So if they don't speak English very well, are we only translating in their language for them? But are we also helping them to understand or and learn English? Is that one of the goals as well?
Well, I think the primary, the umbrella goal, is to help provide the community members with what they need and in the way that they need it. If they identify that they want, that they need to speak English better, then absolutely, there are those resources in Madison that these community and cultural connectors can help them with. And not only connect them to, but to be there to provide some level of support for individuals that are looking for greater proficiency in English.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you. Other foster questions?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Norm. I have some similar questions to what Alder Conklin raised. So I actually managed a Language Access Program for about fifteen years. And so my experience here in Madison, in the healthcare industry, for example, we had about eight full-time, on-staff Spanish interpreters. And we weren't even really close to being able to justify even a part-time staff, Hmong or Mandarin Chinese, which were the kind of next most common languages. So, you know, we had a fair volume using interpreter, telephone interpreters, et cetera. But what's the data show for actual utilization here in the City of Madison over the last several years?
So that data is something that we are, that we're still tracking. And I'd be happy to pull together, I think the best data source would be the data that we have from the language line. And I'd be happy to pull that together for you. But, you know, you're right that, you know, the most intensive translation and interpretation services are Spanish in our community. Yet, you know, we do know that Hmong and traditional Chinese Mandarin are also prevalent languages. And I guess part of what we have discovered is that the communities, how do I want to say this? The communities, we don't know what we're missing in some of our non-English-speaking communities because we're not communicating with them. We're not, they're not connected to the resources that the city or the services that the city provides already. And so that's also part of the hopes with this program or with these positions is understanding, you know, the community members that should be partaking of city services, creating some awareness. And again, you know, coming back to the city with how we can better refine our communications, our services, to meet the needs of the broader community. So there is a bit of an unknown in terms of just how great that need is. But, you know, when we did our focus groups, you know, a few years ago, it was clear that members of every community had, you know, did not have the knowledge about how to engage with the city or even what city services the city offered.
Yeah, absolutely. That doesn't surprise me at all. But we don't have numbers on utilization by language that you can share with us.
I'll have to gather that data, and I can share it with you.
Okay. So regarding the Language Access Plan, so that was referenced in the agency request for these positions, where are we at in that?
You mean, which phase are we in?
Yeah.
So we're Phase 2, Phase 3 of that plan. You might know that there were significant efforts when we started to identify vital documents, translate all the vital documents into each of the top languages. We've been working on how we will create more uniform translation for the website to really make sure that the web pages are accessible in each of the top languages. We're working on other efforts to ensure that, trying to think of the other, we're working on the other efforts to help make sure that agencies are trained and up to date on how to access language access services for the public to make sure that, you know, there's not, there aren't delays or that there aren't misinformation, there's not misinformation happening when people call to the city, that all of our frontline staff are aware of how to provide those language access services. We've also been working on some of our video messaging to make sure that communities that have more reliance on spoken words, that we're able to craft our messages to reach those communities as well. And then, as I mentioned, Phase 3 does include this creation of in-house or on-staff interpretation interpreters and language access staff.
So somewhere between Phase 2 and 3, that's kind of right.
Correct.
And so again, the agency request referenced the plan that calls for a language access coordinator in Phase 2, and that these positions would sort of be hired in place of that position? Can you kind of explain the rationale behind deviating from the plan in that way?
Yep, yeah. So that was a pretty in-depth discussion that we had with some of our employee groups, particularly the Latinx Community Engagement Team, the Multicultural Affairs Committee, that saw value in, again, this more intimate connection to the community over one individual that is coordinating the language access efforts. We have, you know, last year, we were allowed by the Common Council to hire a new Equity and Social Justice manager. And also, we're able to get the benefit of the Equity Coordinator and the Neighborhood Resource Team's Coordinator work into that division. And so the work of the Language Access Coordinator is actually being performed by a team of individuals within that division now versus having just one coordinator. And so that also opened up the possibility of moving forward with some on-staff interpreters that we feel will be more than interpreters. Um, that we feel will be will be more than more than interpreters, but uh really really connect uh to the community.
Okay, uh, then that that sort of team approach to the to the coordination, they're they have accountability for the the. Data piece that's called out in the plan.
I'm sorry, say that again, please?
So if the the plan that calls for this kind of early on in in this, one of the key responsibilities and re- rationale for having this coordinator. Is that they would actually be on point for getting the kind of data that would then lead to discussions around potential. Stuffing in the future, but you you had said that 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 role is kind of being taken up by a collection of folks. But for perhaps data collection is not one of the things that they're handling?
No, data collection is.
Okay, we just don't have it available. All right. So I mean, you mentioned then that the plan calls in phase three for hiring staff interpreters, I think. And when when I was reviewing it, what I read was. Um, there would be an exploration of the potential for for creating those. And then there would actually be hiring of supervisors for future. Staff interpreters and then actually in phase four would be a recommendation to hire staff interpreters where it made fiscal sense. Does that sound right?
Yep, so 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 um, the supervision, uh, so we now have. Uh, so at the time that we wrote the plan, uh, we did not have an Equity and Social Justice Division. Uh, we did not have an Equity and Social Justice Division Manager. Um, and and so we have now the structure in place. Uh, to provide supervision for uh for those roles. We have the structure in place to have a team uh that is uh dedicated to. Um, coordinating language access, uh, supported by uh the um. The uh administrative arm within the Department of Civil Rights. And um, uh, we have um, uh. Uh, one of our positions, uh, the disability rights um and services specialist. Um, has been taking the lead in um overseeing uh work. We've actually been been able to uh work with some of the hourly funds that we've had. Uh, to um, to to test out this model a little bit. Uh, with the uh Chinese Mandarin and um and and Mung communities. And uh, and so so there has been that uh that program oversight. Uh, there has been that that supervision uh that we've that we've been testing out. Um, so so I think um Alder Foster, all of the all of the elements are there. And they've been in place, we've been providing the services. And and this is, this is the next, uh, this is the next step, uh particularly. Uh, to for us to be responsive to the needs of the community.
Thank you. Um, so in again, in the plan where it where it does suggest considering hiring interpreters, it really calls out where it makes fiscal sense. So in in the narratives, the concept is that these positions would cover. Some not insignificant amount of the interpretation and translation needs for the various languages. What is the estimate of of how many of how much of our purchases services we're going to be able to save by getting these on-staff positions?
Excuse me. I wouldn't um, I wouldn't uh interpret the fiscal responsibility that we're. That we're going to save on our purchase of services. As I mentioned, we we exceed those funds every year, you know, there there's a, there's a very strong demand. For these services. Uh, we're going to be able to get more targeted um use out of the um, out of the connector positions. We're going to be able to get more um in-depth use out of the connector positions. But uh, the connectors, um, I don't see uh in any way. Um, uh, reducing uh the the um, the level of um. Uh, contracted services uh that we have, there's just, there's just so much demand for the interpretation and in translation. Uh, that it's, you know, it it's very difficult to meet, um, I'm sorry, it's very difficult not to run over every year.
So I guess now I'm now I'm feeling really confused, so we're gonna have twenty-four hour a week. Positions that aren't gonna do interpretation and translation. That we're we're still gonna spend the exact same amount on contractors and these, I don't, I guess I'm really confused now. I thought the whole point was that we were gonna realize savings, they were gonna be doing a lot of this stuff. So we weren't contracting it out, but you're saying we would not anticipate any reductions in purchase services for interpretations and translations after we. Hire these positions?
That's correct, yeah, they they are going to uh meet that excess of need that we have. Every year, uh, these positions will um.
Access of need, Norm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but your access of need, are we are we like not providing interpretation because we're running out of money?
Right, correct, that's correct, yeah, there there are um. There are uh services that we're not able to provide. Um, or our department is is having to um uh shore up that funding uh through other. Um, other line items in our budget. And so, um, so there's, there's, there's a, there's a demand for the services. Uh, that we that we have that will be met by the connectors. Um, a- and and I'm I'm hopeful that that will, that will really, um. You know, even even at part-time, that that will be uh that they'll be able to address the need. Uh, but there's uh, the need is, the need is so significant every year. Uh, that we're um, you know, we're we're just not able to um, to provide translation and interpretation services. Um, at all times, that they're needed.
Those are all my questions, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Norm.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Mayate, questions?
Yeah, I was just a little bit confused, uh, last meeting, um, I just pointed for clarification. Um, I thought that we hired a Spanish translator and but we didn't hire a Mung uh translator. Um, uh, was that, is that correct or is that my? And how does that relate to uh connectors? I'm sorry, just a little confused.
Sure, no problem. So, um, I believe you're referring to the the Finance Committee.
Yes.
Uh, and so at the Finance Committee, um, uh, the Finance Committee was taking up. Uh, an amendment that would have provided for two additional. Uh, community and cultural connectors in addition to the um, the. One community and cultural connector that was included in um, in the executive budget. Uh, that one community and cultural connector, we would uh certainly imagine to be Spanish because of the the. Primary need for Spanish uh in in Madison. Uh, at the Finance Committee meeting, that uh that amendment uh did not pass. Um, uh, however, um, when um, uh, when I believe President Abbas. Um, saw the opportunity to uh be able to um, provide all three positions. Given this um, this uh later start time in the year for all three positions. Um, I believe that, you know, he saw this as as an opportunity to um, to have a win-win and and. Uh, and be able to create all three positions. Um, and and so, so if um, I I guess I would want to say that. The original position was in the executive budget, uh, sixty percent for one one position. Um, so what's before you now is three positions. Uh, at sixty percent each, uh, but all of them starting no sooner than April, uh, April eleventh of next year.
So so uh, I guess my question too, uh. Uh, given the Alder of this district, there's a lot of Mung community, um, people who are this, I think there's over six thousand Mung. Uh, people in this town of Madison. Um, I think you did the data before, you know, I think you said six percent uh Spanish speaking and about another six percent to the Mung. Uh, community, so and also I think you just gave forty percent and another forty percent to the Mung community, so. Given from uh your standpoint of equity uh issue, uh, do you think this will, this is something that's equitable along the board? Uh, giving the percentage of uh, um. Uh, um. Uh, the community, um, that we're trying to serve both the uh Spanish, Mung. And also Chinese Mandarin, do you think this is a a equity issue that uh is definitely needed as far as the connectors?
I think that um, I think the the connectors. Uh, by by providing a Spanish connector, among uh speaking connector. And uh, and when it speaks uh Chinese Mandarin. I think that will um, not only. Be an equitable solution, uh, so that we're uh respecting and addressing each uh, each language community. Uh, but I think that it really provides the city with the opportunity. Uh, to better learn what needs are um, present within each community. Our our communities that don't speak English very well. Uh, um, oftentimes cannot tell us uh what what their true needs are. Uh, or how we can best um, develop our services to meet their needs. Um, a- as I said, there there can be interpretation. Um, but without that cultural understanding and really that two-way cultural communication. We're not getting at the heart of the of the needs of of our community. And so, so I I believe that these these three positions will be very, very. Uh, uh, they'll provide great insight for the communities that are um, that are coming to the city for service. And for the city of Madison itself, to learn more from from our communities.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole, questions?
Thank you, Mayor, um, hi, Norm. So, um, again, like we discussed on the Finance Committee, I am not putting into question the need for multiple language. Um, um, the the multiple language needs, languages needs that we have in the community. But I'm still extremely confused about the percentages and I just heard our Alder just. Quote you on a six percent Spanish speaking, six percent Mung speaking, forty percent Chinese Mandarin. I mean, I'm sorry, can you please explain what that meant because that doesn't. That 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 doesn't match uh in my mind, that doesn't seem correct to to use those numbers to to identify the need. Can you, can you give explain, go over those numbers again, please?
Sure, sure. All right, so 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 there's, there's a source um that we use called the Statistical Atlas. And so I'm gonna share, I'm gonna share some some data out of there. Um, so, uh, the Statistical Atlas is an aggregate of census and ACS data, right? So, uh, the data within that data set shows us that twelve percent of Madison residents. Were born outside of the United States. Of this foreign-born population, almost fifty-five percent come from Asia. While slightly more than twenty-five percent come from the Americas. Fifteen percent from Mexico, less than three percent for other countries. Within the Asian uh population, fifteen point four percent come from China. And four point seven percent come from Laos or foreign-born Mung population. Uh, the foreign-born, uh, these foreign-born immigrants are less likely to speak or write English very well. Uh, and would benefit from community connectors. So, the data um for Madison. When you, when we look at uh populations uh of individuals a- and the languages that they speak at home. Um, uh, does not, that data does not exist below the state level. So we can't get down to municipality when we talk about languages spoken at home. So that's where I was quoting some of the state data. Um, uh, where uh it records that forty percent. Uh, of the Spanish uh individuals that that speak Spanish at home. Forty point three percent of individuals that uh speak Mung at home. And fifty-two point two percent of individuals that speak Chinese Mandarin at home, speak English less than very well. So so those are percentages of of those those subsets. Um, a- and so, so then I was explaining that uh, just looking at the the percentages of the population. Does not directly correlate to the linguistic need. Uh, some residents, um, the let's, such as residents of um, individuals that that speak Asian languages. Um, from individuals, individual countries have a greater need. Um, may have a greater need than other language speakers. Um, and so, so so that's where, that's where some of the community and cultural connectors. Can help individuals better access city services, but it can, again, also help us. Understand what's missing. Uh, what's missing when we, when we attempt to communicate uh with uh with individuals. Um, what's what what's dropping out of the message or what's missing that um, that they need? And and so the last set of data, the last set of data, excuse me, that I shared. Uh, was um, uh, American Community Survey data. And it estimates that eleven point eight percent of the Madison population speak a language other than English at home. Uh, within that group, uh, uh, the data says uh seventeen hundred and fifty-eight people. Or nineteen point six percent of the Spanish population spoke English less than very well. While five thousand four hundred twenty-three people, or forty-five percent of the population. Speaking Asian or Pacific Islander languages spoke English less than very well. So what the data, what the data is suggesting then is that even though there are more Spanish speakers, obviously. Um, the English that um, uh, that these households speak. Maybe they may speak English better than some other Mung or Chinese Mandarin households. And so, uh, it's, it's, it's identifying the need. That we really need to um, focus across our communities. Uh, to make sure that um, that again, they're understanding, we're communicating our services and we're understanding their needs.
Okay, so again, so just want to clarify, these are those that normalized numbers are percentages of percentages of percentages. It's not like we're saying six percent equals six percent, this is the six percent of it. Like in the case of the fifty-five percent, we're talking about a fifteen percent um, language and then a seven percent of Mung. Plus other things in there, so that that would be like a three percent or something of the one hundred percent that we're talking about. So it doesn't really, doesn't equate the same, the same number. Um, are you familiar with the data that that is, uh, are you familiar with the data used in the World Populations Review site?
No.
Takes um, that takes into consideration languages?
No.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm not um, very familiar either, but again, the numbers kind of imply the same thing that we're, that I'm I'm trying to get at. There's um. I I mean, again, I understand the need for all these languages, but I also, I also know.
Question, a question, Alder?
So in the Spanish-speaking community, I just trying to, I just trying to understand. When we talked earlier about the shares, the purchase services and not having enough funding in there to serve everybody. How many of those people that we couldn't serve were Spanish-speaking? Do you have a large number on that? Like, I I still have to go back, I mean, I hate to. Like, I I still have to go back, I mean, I hate to do this, but I I still have to go back to the idea, to the concept. That we have a larger population of Spanish speakers in the city. Um, and this is, you know, like, how, how compare with the other ones? So, how many people were not served in the Spanish-speaking population?
So, so, so I don't, I don't have the answer for how many people weren't served in the Spanish-speaking. But I can tell you that the Spanish-speaking populations are the most served. Through our language access uh services. And, and Alder, I, um. If, you know, when we, when we went through the process of identifying the top languages in Madison. Um, it, it, it wasn't a process whereby we, um. You know, we, we created uh tiers of access based on language. But it, it, it created the, the identification that these are the, these are the top languages. Uh, and this is really an extension of uh some of the, some of the federal uh requirements that we have through uh through Title VI. Uh, but, but we identified that these are the top languages. And we, we went about the process of making sure that all of our vital documents. Were trans uh uh translated into each of those languages. We know that um the Spanish speakers are the vast majority of. Um, the, 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 uh, those that access the language services. Uh, but we have a responsibility as a, as a, a city agency. To ensure that um, number one, every language uh is um is accommodated. Uh, when accessing city services, and especially the top three languages. And we're going to be, we're gonna be providing um meaningful access uh proactively. Uh, for those uh, for those communities. And so, so, so that's why they, the model of the three connectors for each of the three top languages. Uh, is um, is, is the proposal that, that we put forth in our, in our supplemental request uh in the budget.
One more question, I'm sorry. Okay, so, again, so going back to the idea that Spanish is the most. The ones that use the most the service, or the shared services that we spend money. Wouldn't be logical for me to think that if I have two um of these connectors that are Spanish-speaking, wouldn't that free? That line for all the other services? That, wouldn't, wouldn't that free space for the purchase services to accommodate even more people with more languages? If, if they, if the Spanish speakers are now overloading your demand on the purchase services?
Um, you know, uh, that's, that's a possibility. Um, uh, at the same time, you know, there's, there's a, I feel like there's a, there's a balancing. Um, it's, it's, a- as I've, as I've tried to, tried to explain. It's not only the interpreting uh of the, of the language, of the words. Uh, that are being said, or the translation of the, of the words that are written. It is, um, it is that connection to the community. And there are, um, there are, there are sectors of. Our community of of Madison residents that uh are, are not being. Um, are not being engaged, are not being uh connected or or um or even served. In the way that they might like to be served. And so we want to do a good job in um representing. The, the city of Madison to each of these, um, each of these top, top communities.
Thank you, Norm.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitterver questions?
Or finance? Um, so my question is uh more about um. Uh, the process of spending our entire budget, so um if we were to accept this particular amendment. Um, we would wind up having pretty much no cushion, I guess is the way to describe it. Um, and so I'm just wondering kind of what position that puts us in for um as new things come down the pike. In terms of like what experience we have with past budgets, because I am new. Um, so what experience do we have with past budgets where we've basically done this, where we've sort of spent down almost to the last penny? And then wound up uh being unable to um come up with funds for other priorities later in the year as they arise?
Um, Alder Vitterver, are you referring to, so you're not referring to other amendments this evening, you're just referring to the budget overall? Right, so, um, we have to set the levy. And there are other revenue streams into the general fund besides the property tax levy, but we set the budget. We also establish um a contingent reserve. So you can find that in the budget, that's set at about one point eight million dollars. Uh, we try to have that at about half percent of the budget. And that's to address any sort of emergencies that may come up during the year, for example, if we have heavier snow. Uh, and higher snow costs, that helps with that. Um, and we can also appropriate from uh the general fund balance if we need to, up to a certain extent. So, um, under state law, there's a program called the Expenditure Restraint Program. And in return for the city keeping its growth in general fund expenditures. Below a factor that's roughly inflation plus a portion of the net new construction factor. If we keep that growth rate um lower than that, in our, in the, uh, in our general fund um expenditures. We get about seven million of state aid. So we have to keep that as well. Now, based on what the um council has done so far, we probably will have about. Two million dollars or so of expenditure restraint room. So again, there, so there is, there is room um to address like emergencies that might come up during the year. Um, we tend to have agencies typically spend less than what's, what they're budgeted, there are some exceptions to that. And uh you, you'll see that in uh the year-end appropriation that the council will take up at its December meeting for twenty twenty-one. Um, and there are, there are other ways to address um issues that might come up. During, during the year, but those are some of the mechanisms that we have in place. Uh, we can't increase the levy any further, we're actually setting the levy, once it's set. And it goes on to the property tax bills, we, we can't do anything more with it. Uh, probably some other measures if things get pretty dire, and we've done some of these things more recently. Because the pandemic would be, for example, to hold positions vacant. Um, and that would generate some savings, uh, cut back on, uh, let's say, non-essential travel. Um, uh, scrutinized contracts, which, again, these are measures that we've been doing since the pandemic. Um, came to the fore and, and we had to address reductions in, in revenue.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miazze questions? Again?
Actually, I think we're, I thought we were in the next section already, because I was the last one. I was gonna do a call to question.
We're, we're not quite there yet.
I just wanna move along, it's a long night.
Yeah, thank you, Alder, I appreciate the sentiment. Um, but I, it does look to me like we don't have any additional questions for staff. Uh, and so, uh, President Abbas, did you wish to speak briefly to the amendment?
Well, I will speak very briefly, because uh I want to respect Alder Miazze's call of question request. As we already spent almost two hours last time at finance on this amendment, and we spent over over here. Uh, so I will, uh, during the finance, one of the concerns I heard from my colleague was about. Some of the money was used for town of medicine, so this amendment does not impact town of medicine at all. And find a great opportunity and balance while uh DCR is gonna use uh equity analysis and tool to hire these people. So delaying a little bit actually work in the benefit, so we can get all three position, and all these three positions are coming through. Uh, Language Access Plan, Plan, which, which provide recommendation to do that, and while I did my research. Um, and discussing with DCR, I think so it's a, it's a really important need for the community. I will also say, personal living exp- experience as an immigrant. Um, I completely understand the need of a connection, which is extremely important, beside translation services. These communities, Mong communities, Chinese and and Spanish communities, are very important for them to have that connection. And connection create trust, and trust create partnership between city and those community. And these resources can be used more positively, or access to those uh resources could be extremely. Help, helpful, well, once we have those connection. So, with that, I will urge my colleague to uh really think about and maintain an equity as. While they are making this, the C and making process for this amendment. Our city uh often outstrips available resources to provide meaningful language access. Spanish-speaking Mong, Chinese Mandarin residents, pay taxes as well as any other resident. And they also contribute to our economy and make Madison a stronger and more vibrant community. Uh, we have a moral and legal obligation to ensure that our uh critical programs and services are fully accessible to them. And to other residents who preferred languages not English, so with that, I will encourage you all to vote for it. Thanks.
Thank you, President Abbas. Uh, Alder Foster, further discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I'll try to brief also. Um, so as, as I mentioned before, um, I spent. Uh, probably more of my, my working adult life um ensuring language access for folks. Um, than, than anything else I've done, I'm super passionate about it, uh, hundred percent supportive of making improvements. Uh, this, this amendment is not there, not even close. There's a reason that these positions were not included in the executive budget. We, we have no data that we're actually even basing this on, and I can tell you that it, it makes no sense. To, to hire these with what we've heard tonight. On top of that, we have an incredible language access plan that we got largely in thanks to former Alder Bedar. Who also has decades of experience doing this work. We have, um, this is a, a really significant departure, that plan does not call for these positions actually at all. And if, if staff is recommending a, a really significant departure from that plan, not hiring a coordinator, for example. Um, we're supposed to be getting updates on an, uh, at the end of each phase, common council is supposed to get an update on that plan, I don't think we've received one yet. If there's a recommendation from staff to update that plan, I think that needs to come to the common council, we need to have information, and we need to actively update that. Uh, there are definitely opportunities to make a ton of improvements here. But if we, if we commit a hundred thousand dollars a year of our operating budget, which is what these two point six positions is. That's a hundred thousand dollars, we're saying this is the best use of that money. And I, to me, there is zero question that we had, that, that, that's not the case, and I, I think it would be a really big mistake. So while I'm very, very supportive of language active services, and would be very supportive of increasing funding. To uh to reduce those barriers and connect more folks, this is not the amendment to do it, and I urge you to vote against it, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue for discussion. Alder Miazze?
I think not to vote for this is basically silencing voices. I don't care if it's later on, and uh so many times on this common council, I've always heard about not hearing. From uh marginalized communities, I think this is something that definitely that we need. As quickly, as soon as possible, I'm just tired of hearing about. How uh later on processes do, do process later on, later on, and later on, while people's voices are not being heard. So I think this is one thing that we definitely should definitely move upon and do something, so people's voices are being heard. So we can actually hear them speak to what they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no further Alders in the queue wishing to speak. Um, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say, let's do a roll call. Uh, so all those in favor? I, uh, those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. Other Figaroa Cole?
No.
No. Foster?
No.
No. Furman?
It's a no.
Is that a no?
Correct, no else.
Thank you. Halverson?
Aye.
Aye. Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Aye. Heck?
No.
No. Lamer?
Aye.
Aye. Martin?
No.
No. Miazze?
Aye.
Aye. Vervier?
Aye.
Aye. Vitterver?
No.
No. Wahalia?
Aye.
Aye. Abbas?
Aye.
Aye. Alboris?
Yes.
Aye. Benford? Aye. Bennett?
No.
No. Carter? Aye. Aye. Conklin?
No.
No. Curry?
No.
No. Evers?
No.
No. It's ten ayes and ten nos. With ten ayes and ten nos. The chair will vote aye, and the amendment passes. And that will take us to Amendment Twelve. Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney, did you wish to make a motion?
Wait, before, i- is, this is our last item, correct?
No, Alder, not quite.
But can I move like a, a, a quick break?
Absolutely, Vice President Martin.
I, I'd like to move a, a ten-minute break.
Is there a second? Uh, Alder Furman will second. Uh, it's nine thirty-eight, that would be, bring us back at nine forty-eight, is there any objection to a unanimous vote in favor of recess? Seeing no objection, we're recessed until nine forty-eight PM. Folks, we're about a minute out. All right, uh, it's nine forty-eight. So we'll ask, uh, the council to come back and turn on their cameras, if you're able. And I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Furman?
Present.
Halverson?
Present.
Harrington McKinney?
Here.
Heck?
Here.
Lemer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Miyazze?
Here.
Vervier?
Here.
Vidiver?
Here.
Wahalia?
Yeah.
Abbas?
Yeah.
Alboris?
Here.
Benford?
Present.
Bennett?
Here.
Carter?
Present.
Conklin?
Present.
Curry?
Here.
And all their Evers?
Sure.
Madam Mayor, we have form. Thank you. All right, just a, a brief update on where we're at. We have uh, one operating amendment and one capital amendment to deal with. Uh, and then we have to vote on both the capital and operating budgets. And then if you'll look back at your initial agenda, we have to vote to actually authorize the levy. Um, and then we do have one other item confirming the format of the rest of our meetings this year. Yeah, so a few more things to go, but um, not that many. So on operating amendment twelve, Alder Harrington McKinney, did you wish to make a motion?
Um, Madam Mayor, I move approval of, uh, uh, item number twelve.
Alder Carter?
Second.
All right, Dave, would you please give us an update on where we are on the levy? And what this amendment would be in terms of an impact?
Certainly, Mayor. Uh, we have about nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars of remaining levy limit room. This amendment would, um, increase the levy by, um, seventy-nine thousand dollars. So that would take us, uh, in over the levy limit.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, are there questions for staff?
Aye.
Alder Figueroa Cole?
Just need clarification, so are we not supposed to stay on the levy?
Wait, you, you cannot exceed the levy limit, that's correct, Alder.
So why, why would we discuss this one then, if we can afford it?
Because I'd like to present it.
Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney, you're out of order.
Thank you.
Yeah. Alder, if you don't wish to adopt the amendment, you should vote no on it.
No, I, just honestly, as a, as a method of procedure, is that the way that goes?
It, Alder, any Alders, uh, is welcome to move an amendment. Um, generally, when we get to this point i- in respect to the levy limit, the motion is to place on file.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional questions for staff? Seeing none, Alder Harrington McKinney, do you wish to speak to the amendment?
Um, I would, uh, like to have questions for staff, is that, uh?
No, go ahead, Alder, I didn't realize your hand wasn't up.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I would like to have a presentation.
Alder, you've muted yourself.
I'd like to have a presentation from staff first, from, uh, uh, the Finance Director, then the Human Resources Director, and the Legislative Analyst, and the Director of Policy Planning and Evaluation, in that order.
Alder, for an amendment that we do not have sufficient levy room for, that seems like an awful lot of presentations from staff?
Uh, well.
Do you have specific questions for them?
Uh, well, we've worked on that for quite a while, and since they put the effort in, I'd like for them to be presented. And so at the end, Alders can vote it down, or we'll place it on file. But I'd like, uh, the presentation to go in for the record, please.
All right, Alder. Uh, staff, given the situation, I'd ask you to keep your remarks brief.
I guess I'll start. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the amendment would, um, appropriate a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to public health to aggr- address gun violence. A hundred and eighty thousand would be offset by, um, salary savings in the Office of the Independent Monitor Budget. By assuming that the data analyst position would not be filled until September of twenty twenty-two, that saves fifty-six thousand dollars. It would also, um, act to eliminate the digital equity coordinator position that was approved, uh, in an amendment at the Finance Committee. And that would, um, uh, offset that, that a hundred and eighty thousand by another forty-five thousand. That leaves the net, uh, levy impact of seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney, I believe you wanted the H R director?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, thank you.
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you, um, for this opportunity to speak.
Mayor, Mayor, I'm sorry, Director Harper, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Mayor, I'd like to call a point of order and actually call the question. I think this is an incredibly inappropriate use of our colleagues' time. We're now on hour seventeen of budget deliberations. We don't have a levy limit. We are wasting the public's time, we're wasting Alder's time, and we're wasting staff's time. I'd like to call the question.
Uh, so there's a motion to call the question, is there a second? Alder Benford will second the call for the question.
Personal privilege.
Uh, Alder, uh, the call for a question is not debatable, so we need to move to a vote on it. Uh, is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of a call of the question? Uh, Alder Carter would request a roll call. So on the call of the question, all those in favor of moving directly to a vote on this item, aye. Those opposed, no, as, uh, uh, your name is called, and the clerk will call the roll. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Foster?
Aye.
Aye. Furman?
Aye.
Aye. Halverson?
No.
No. Harrington McKinney?
No.
No. Heck?
Aye.
Aye. Lemer?
Aye.
Aye. Martin?
Aye.
Aye. Miyazze?
No.
No. Vervier?
No.
No. Vidiver?
Aye.
Aye. Wahalia?
No.
No. Abbas?
No.
No. Alboris?
No.
No. Benford?
Aye.
Aye. Bennett?
Yes.
Aye. Carter? Alder Carter?
No.
No. Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Curry?
Yes.
Aye. Evers? All their Evers? All right, I don't see him, um. That's eleven ayes and eight nos. With eleven ayes, we'll move immediately to the question, um, which is amendment twelve. It's been moved and seconded. Uh, is there objection?
Out of abdunment.
Uh, Alder, we have to move directly to a vote, the question's been called. So, uh, Attorney Haas?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I don't believe it was a two-thirds vote, though, was it?
Uh, you're correct, it was a simple majority. I wasn't aware we needed a two-thirds to call the question.
Yes.
All right then, so, sorry, I did not inform you of the need for a two-thirds vote. Uh, so then the question is not called. Uh, and, uh, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Um, I would like to proceed with the, um, presentations by staff.
All right, Director Donahue?
Thank you, I don't know if I should take that personal, that, uh, you all really didn't hear anything I had to say this evening, um, but thank you, um, for, for moving forward. Um, it may be more appropriate for me to fill in some of the gaps. I know that Karen was, uh, prepared to present a timeline in regards to some of the staffing within the Office of the Independent Police Monitor. And I wanted to weigh in in regards to a few of the positions in regards to usual timeframes that it would take to fill the position. I'm more than happy to speak on that now, but it may make a more, make a little more sense to you all after Karen weighed in regards to the overall timeline.
Is the analyst capoeira with us?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, um, Alder McKinney asked me to provide, uh, a couple pieces of information for you, and so I am going to, um, quickly share my screen. One moment. Okay. The first piece of information I was asked to provide is, uh, a brief overview of the pieces of the, um, M G O five point one nine that discuss the relationship of the Independent Monitor to the Office of the Independent Monitor staff. So you see the highlighted here, subject to available funding, the monitor shall be responsible for hiring, supervising, and managing sufficient professional support staff to effectively perform the duties of the O I M. And then also in, um, part seven, it discusses the staffing of the O I, of the O I M will be the monitor, the administrative support of employee and adapt data analyst. The next piece of information I was, um, requested to present is a brief outline of the Independent Monitor hiring process. Now, this is subject to change. And the next, uh, the next Police Oversight Board meeting is Thursday, eleven eighteen at five P M. So the first four items have occurred. The net, the last three items in red are, um, timing to be determined, have, have not yet, um, occurred. And that is the information that I have to share.
Hey, if I can jump in now, thank you. Um, so there are three positions in particular that I think folks are, um, interested in. I'm sorry, Alder McKinney, did you want to weigh in before I continued?
No, please continue.
There are three positions, as Karen mentioned, uh, Independent Police Monitor, that position is currently underway. Um, that position did initiate, I believe, back in July. Um, there was an extension to the deadline of their recruitment due to a lack of, of applicants. Um, that position is still underway, I believe there's a goal by, by that committee to have an offer out in December. Um, and I just want to give you a couple things to give consideration to in regards to this timeline. Um, assuming that this position, um, there is an offer by December, you would expect someone coming in at a position at this level, that there'd be at least forty-six weeks from the time that an offer is accepted, before they'd actually start. Keeping that in mind, there are a couple positions that do need to be filled. Um, I would assume the priority would be given to that administrative assistant position. I would assume the priority will be given to that administrative assistant position. As mentioned earlier, there is an effort to make sure that equity analysis, the equitable hiring tool is used on new recruitments. So, with the use of that, I think the Independent Police Monitor, who would be assigned as a hiring authority for that agency, will want to weigh in and create that position description. Before that's finalized, I would assume that that'd be at least two to three weeks. If we're going to bring in folks to participate in the use of an equitable hiring tool, I would want to build in another couple weeks for that. The posting for a position at this level, I would assume would be two to three, four weeks, or two to three weeks, another week for screening, two weeks for testing, another two weeks to schedule and conduct interviews, another three weeks before that applicant starts. So, you're looking at three to four months. And these estimates that I'm throwing at you, they're incredibly ambitious. Another position, another obligation of the Police Monitor would be to fill that down, an analyst position, I believe that's a position that folks are hoping would get delayed. If you all are extremely ambitious, if folks who are involved in this process are ambitious, and this is assuming that folks are, you know, the Monitor is putting energy into both of these positions at the same time, I would assume that that would be at least four to five months, and that's being pretty optimistic. A good two to three weeks for that position description to be finalized, three to four weeks for that position to be posted, another week for screening, subject matter experts, another two weeks, and then another three to four weeks before that individual starts. If I'm being realistic in regards to different things that will be on this individual's plate, I think one of the priorities will be is figuring out, familiarizing themselves with members of that committee, City Services. This is assuming that this person starts in mid-February. I think it would be difficult to have someone in that position within six months. And from there, it depends on how ambitious folks are in keeping this process moving.
Additional questions for staff?
Is Arielle on board?
I'm sorry?
Arielle, is she on?
Director Smith, are you present?
I'm present.
Go ahead.
So, this funding, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, okay. So, this funding would be used to support additional FTE that would be added to a position that was passed in an amendment earlier tonight, creating a 1.0 full-time position dedicated to gun violence intervention. This funding would also support the ability for us to better engage with faith-based leaders in faith-based spaces around violence prevention and intervention efforts. This includes, but is not limited to mentoring, community connection, and providing positive youth development programming and opportunities in those spaces.
Thank you. Additional questions for staff? Seeing none, Alder Harrington McKinney?
And I'd like to speak to the motion, please.
Please do.
And I'm going to take my time and speak to it. And the reason that I'm going to do this is because I have received many emails related to Amendment Number Twelve. One of the ones I'll share, please reject the malicious mischief that has been proposed in Amendment Twelve, cutting the Police Department Independent Monitor data analysts. This is another example of how institutional racism works. Politicians funded by developers, real estate interests, and the police union are who want that money in the next election, work tirelessly to sabotage anything that threatens the status quo in which police are able to lock up every black person in sight in order to prevent one from potentially committing a crime. I want to say that Alder Carter was a courteous sponsor, and I want to say that because I own this amendment. I am black, not white, born in Mississippi. My uncle and two friends were murdered in Mississippi because they dared look at a white woman. My dad died at 76, never have voted, and being called a boy until the day he died. I ran for common counsel because I was grateful that members, mentors of black churches intervened in my only son's life, such that he was not found shot dead in a pool of his own blood as he was headed down that path. And I ran on public safety. I ran on public safety because the evening that I died, did a ride-along, there were five robberies in my neighborhood, and I ended up in the Allied Drive area. And I asked myself, what would have happened in my neighborhood, in my community, if I needed police? It was an event recently that I attended, where the Honorable Judge Nia Tramel was there, and she had just completed a rotation in the juvenile division. One by one, there was a parade of young black males in her court, all for various charges. She shared that she was moved to tears. And why? Because those young men could have been her son, was her statement. I wanted to bring attention to what was missing in our deliberations in our work. The police culture in Madison is not new. We all understand that we have a broken criminal justice system. There is a disproportionate number of black and brown individuals in the criminal justice system. We have heard many complaints about repeating juveniles and revolving door of the juvenile justice system. Of the $47.2 million from the ARPA funding, a resolution authorizing $1.45 million of those funds went to the Board of Public Health to be used for implementing programs for violence prevention and emerging needs. $1.2 million for violence prevention initiatives that support violence prevention roadmap. $150,000 to the Carers Program to support evaluation. $100,000 for PFAS education, outreach, and coordination. $360,000 in 2021. $1.9 million for these initiatives. In the 2022 Executive Operating Budget, of the evidence-based data, we understand root cause analysis and violence prevention strategies. Of these, none of these funds were allocated to those individuals at highest risk for gun violence. We must make gun violence prevention a priority. Those at highest risk for involvement in gun violence. What models will work and identify mentors to engage in intensive monitoring with role models that will be effective in these spaces? Include the faith-based communities in problem-solving solutions and in the RFP process. $800,000 will be released in a future RFP. $450,000 for in-house training with zero dollars earmarked for those at highest risk for gun violence. This amendment was to address gun violence prevention, engage faith communities as effective support systems for gun violence prevention, and organizations proven to be effective in those spaces. I wanted to make sure that I read that into the record because when we talk about values and how our budget is directed, we are absent, and I am appalled by the sense of defunding and deflating police. And so, to make our value systems also include the young people that are so prevalent in our community. I understand and did not expect this to pass, but I wanted to make sure that my voice was heard. And for those of you who look like me, who said that I'm not black enough, I ask you the question, are you able to live with the young juveniles that parade back and forth in the court system? And are you okay with how these dollars have been allocated? Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none.
Have an alternate, please.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
And my alternate is that this be placed on file.
Thank you, Alder. The substitute motion is to place on file?
Aye.
Which has been seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of placing on file? Seeing no objection, Amendment Twelve. And the operating side is placed on file. And that will take us back to Amendment Eleven on the Capitol Budget. Can I please have a motion to take that off the table?
Move motion to take it off the table.
Second. Moved and seconded to take off the table. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing none, that item is off the table. And this is in information technology regarding digital accessibility and engagement. Alder Furman? Motion, please.
All right, my microphone button disappeared. Move adoption.
Alder Evers?
Sorry.
Moved and seconded to adopt. And we're back on the Capitol side, so I won't ask for a levy limit update. Are there any questions for staff, Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. We are pretty late in this budget process, so I'll try to be quick. I know Sarah Edgerton is with us this evening, and I wanted to give her an opportunity to talk a little about, first start and talk about where this position came from and what...
Director Edgerton?
Evening all. Thank you, Alder Furman. So, this position came out of several different pieces. It came out of the work that was done by the Task Force on Digital Inclusion, and the Common Council accepted their report and recommendations on October 5th. It also came out of the CDA Housing Report that was done, where we collected quite a bit of data on what digital inclusion looked like in CDA housing, and where there were major disconnects. And it's not only with actual broadband access, it's also with literacy, having devices, actually understanding the technology and understanding, you know, how to be safe when on the internet. How to actually do job applications was one of the issues that was that we noted in the survey that was done. We also saw that there was a disconnect in finding affordable internet. So, there are these different programs that are offered by internet service providers, and many of the CDA renters were unaware of them. And then, as what we really discovered was then during the pandemic, as this digital gap really became bigger and greater, there was more discovery of this lack of connection between those who have and those who don't. And what we really started to see was that, you know, digital equity really refers to whether people can access and effectively use technology and have the necessary tools to participate in society today. And so, from that, this is where this understanding of we needed to have a position that could help the city to address this gap. And it's a position that we have needed for quite a few years. And, you know, it's time to look at, I'm sorry, I'm tired. I apologize. It's time to look at how we can do coordination and outreach and communication, how we can look at opportunities for digital inclusion in the community, and how to look at different funding resources. There are lots of grants that are out there, there are lots of opportunities to work with other institutions here in Madison, and to look at different ideas and partnerships around trying to create more Wi-Fi networks so that we can look at providing digital access to residents that don't have access, to look at partnerships to figure out how to provide devices to those who don't have it, and to also look at opportunities within our internal functionality, you know, things like our city's website. How do we make that more inclusive? So, you know, it's not only having a 3-1-1 system, but it's also looking at, there are about 35,000 pages of content that's out there on the city website. How do we bring that down and streamline that and make that more accessible? What more of our forms and applications do we have that we need to get together? So, this is what we are looking for as we do this. That's what I have.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you so much for staying with us this evening. I'm sorry this is so late, I appreciate the explanation. That's all, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you, Alder Furman. There any additional questions for staff? Seeing none, Alder Furman, do you wish to speak to the amendment?
Yes, and I'll be incredibly quick. I wish we were sitting here and talking about funding a municipal broadband network. Internet should be a utility, but state law and finances make that incredibly difficult. And we think this is a great step towards working with the community to make broadband more accessible, as well as digital literacy, access to devices, et cetera. I'm excited about this position, and I hope the council supports the other 50% funding for this position. 50% of the funding for this position is already in the operating budget. The other 50% is happening.
Thank you, Alder Furman, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor?
Mayor, please make me know. No vote for me.
There's Alder Harrington McKinney, is that a request for a roll call?
Request for a roll call, please.
Yep. So, roll call's been requested, all those in favor of Capitol Amendment Eleven? Aye, those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye Foster?
Aye.
Aye Furman?
Aye.
Aye Halverson?
No.
No Harrington McKinney?
No.
No Heck?
Aye.
Aye Lemer?
Aye.
Aye Martin?
Aye.
Aye Miazze?
No.
No Verveer?
Aye.
Aye Vidiver?
Aye.
Aye Waelia?
No.
No Abbas?
No.
No Alboris?
Aye.
Aye Benford?
Aye.
Aye Bennett?
Aye.
Aye Carter?
No.
No Conklin?
Aye.
Aye Curry?
Aye.
Aye Evers?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 14 ayes and six noes.
With 14 ayes, that amendment passes. Um, and we have officially worked our way through all of the amendments, folks. Uh, so give me just a second to shuffle the papers. Uh, all right, so uh let's try this. Um, President Abbas, can we take the capital budget off the table, please?
Move motion to take off uh from the table, the capital budget?
Second.
Moved and seconded to take the capital budget off the table. Is there any objection to doing so? Seeing no objection, then President Abbas, a motion to adopt uh Legisstar 67001, the 2022 executive capital budget as amended by the Finance Committee and this body, and Legisstar 67496, the 2022 executive operating budget as amended by the Finance Committee and this body.
Move motion to adopt the executive budget, uh operation and capital as amended by finance and this body.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to adopt the 2022 budget. Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney, is your hand up?
Uh, yes, please register me as a no.
Uh, we'll please record Alder Harrington McKinney as a no vote. Is there any uh questions or discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording a 19 to one vote in favor of the budget? Seeing no objection, uh we'll record that vote. Um, and I will turn to finance staff and see how long I need to riff. Should we take up item number four before we take up item number three?
Uh, Mayor, we can move right to the budget resolution.
OK. So then, uh, President Abbas, a motion, please, on Legisstar 68067, adopting the 22 uh city budget and authorizing a general property tax levy.
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Dave, would you please fill in the blanks for us?
I will, Mayor. I'll just remind you that we need to separate the second from the last. Be a further resolve clause, and that needs to be a separate vote.
OK, thank you for reminding me. Do you want to provide the the levy numbers?
Yep, so I'll walk through that now. Uh, so starting with the um fiscal note, the levy will result in a tax rate of approximately 8.31 mils. The property tax levy will be 259,44,042 dollars. Um, the um allowable levy is increased by 29,990 dollars from 259,018,901 to 259,048,890. Um, those other blanks are just the the levy that I um that I read to you. And um uh, and then in the last, be it finally resolved clause, these are the um uh maximum amount of debt that can be issued to reimburse expenditures in the adopted 2022 capital budget. So the first number is the general obligation indebtedness. That includes the carryover appropriations from 2021 as well as the new appropriations that you um uh have worked through throughout the process. That first number is 207,366,317 dollars. The next number is the amount of um water utility revenue bonded indebtedness. That is 5,951,000. And the final uh number there is sewer utility uh revenue bonded indebtedness of 9,378,000. So, Mayor, just to um circle back again, the property tax levy that would be approved uh would be 259,044,042.
Thank you. Uh, and let me just confirm uh that it is uh is the last uh be it finally resolved clause that we need to separate?
It's the last be it further resolved clause.
Thank you.
Yep.
The general debt reserves?
That's correct.
OK. So um without objection, we'll separate that clause, and I'll read it uh for a separate vote. Um, the clause reads, be it further resolved, general debt reserves will be applied to reduce general fund debt service, but the city will not appropriate funds of an equal amount for capital projects. In order to do this, MGO section 4.17 requires that this paragraph be approved by a two-thirds vote of the council. Uh, so on that clause, President Abbas, a motion, please? You're muted, I'm sorry.
Move motion to adopt.
Vice President Martin? Will second, thank you. Uh, is there any, are there any questions? Is there any discussion? Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of that clause? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of that clause, and MGO section 4.17 is satisfied. So we're back to the main motion. Are there any additional questions for staff? Seeing no questions, is there any discussion? Alder Revere?
Thank you, Mayor. Before we conclude, I do want to take a moment on behalf of all of the council to thank you, your staff, all of the city division department heads and budget contacts that worked so hard on this document over the last many, many months. Uh, most especially, though, their participation these last three late nights and evenings. Uh, I want to know, of course, specifically mentioned by name, uh, our finance director, Dave Schmidzke, your newly mentored budget manager, Christine Coe, or and our wonderful uh four uh budget policy analysts, of course, Steph Mayberry, Ryan Pennington, Brent Slope, and Elizabeth York, our veteran member of the team. Uh, I would just want to share that in my uh recollection, this really is a a record number of 11th hour alternate and substitute budget amendments. Uh, I don't recall this many in my memory, at least the last several years. So so it really has been an extra burden that we've placed on our finance staff. Uh, and I want to especially, again, on behalf of all of us, thank them so much for their assistance uh and and patience in working with the 20 of us elders. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Alder Revere. I I uh think it may may you may have to reach back to my first term on the council for a comparable situation. Uh, Alder Alboris on the motion?
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I I just want to also kind of echo what um Alder Revere mentioned. Um, you know, these deliberations are not not easy. Um, you know, there's a lot of passion and energy on on all sides of of the discussions. But um, you know, I think when we're memorializing our budget, we're doing a lot of things, reassuring our values. Um, we're providing essential services. We're providing income to to staff. Um, that helps, you know, with, you know, many, many things and 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 stabilizing a workforce and, you know, helping our economy. And uh little things like, you know, my leaves were swept this week on my my street, which was awesome, really, really cool to see, you know, our council work happen in action. Um, just with something as simple as that, our our garbage being picked up or um, you know, with the winter coming, you know, snow being removed. So I just want to thank all my colleagues on the council uh for for their passion in this in this go around. And and you, Madam Mayor, for facilitating a discussion. I think that it uh, we'll just say, it definitely was uh probably, oh, how to describe it? It definitely got passionate, to say the least, at times amongst amongst colleagues and and even with you as our chair. But uh needless to say, I think that everybody's um heart was in the right spot when trying to do this, hopefully. So uh, thank you all for indulging me in my comments. And um, you know, it's been pretty fun spending, you know, more time with you than I would have done with my family this week. So uh, needless to say, appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter on the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to say, although uh Alder Foster said this is 17 hours of uh budget deliberation, I was here when we would go to 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the morning the first night and then 3:00 o'clock in the morning the second night. I can tell you that these three nights have been wonderful to go to bed at midnight versus 4:00 in the morning, take a shower and go to work. Um, I just also want to thank staff. Um, and I have to agree, although uh the mayor said her first year, I've never seen some alternates and substitutes and et cetera, et cetera, in my tenure. Um, I think that um it doesn't get budget season doesn't get any better, right? It always is the same. It's um fighting till till the end. And uh, thank God, the levy stops us because we still be going doing budget deliberations if it wasn't for the levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Abbas?
I echo what uh Michael A. G. R. Revere said. Uh, I also, as a council president, say special thanks to finance staff, not only during this budget, but throughout the orientation of new orders as well as coming to CCEC for presentation, always available, and going above and beyond, also giving presentation on art, but really making us as a council, all 20 of us, successful to understand this budget. Uh, truly appreciate uh Dave Schmitzky and also uh staff, all the finance staff. And also will especially acknowledge Christine Koo. Uh, she worked really hard. The last minute amendment change on uh DC, I was sending her emails, texting her. She was taking getting off from the office on a metro and taking care of the stuff, doing really extra above and beyond, really make sure things can get done. And also Ryan and others, analysts, really, really thankful uh for their hard work. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, President Abbas. Alder Bennett?
I think um budget season is done. It's been real. Y'all worked hard. We worked hard. But, OK, thank you, good night.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Miadze?
Uh, I guess um um Mike Revere probably said it best and everybody else. But as a new alder, I just want to thank city staff. Of course, it is a still a a learning curve because I think I have a lot still to learn. But I really appreciate them, city staff, always being there and asking up, you know, answering our questions and he- helping us as new elders navigate this um all the procedures and everything. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder Miadze. No further alders in the queue. Is there any objection to me speaking from the chair? Seeing no objection, I just briefly uh want to thank all of you uh for working through this process. And I think, uh, you know, we have some very strong uh and in sometimes wildly differing opinions about the budget. And but at the end of the day, uh, we are hopefully minutes away from adopting a budget that it significantly supports the construction of affordable housing in our community. And it and particularly for some of our most vulnerable residents, uh, supports tenants, uh, supports homeownership, um, expands violence prevention services in our community, invests in our young people uh and employment programming for them, invests in our transit system, uh, invests in people who are experiencing homelessness and providing safe and humane solutions for them. Yes, invests in the CARES program uh and uh provides equitable service delivery for the new residents uh that will be coming into the city of Madison from the town of Madison uh next year. And and perhaps, uh, last but not at all least, finally funds an ambulance for Station 14, for which I really want to thank Alder Curry uh for her leadership and work on that. And it it this, none of this is possible without our amazing staff, certainly our budget staff. But to be honest, um, uh, all of our agencies started this process in April uh and have been working on it diligently ever since. And there's a tremendous amount of work that goes on behind the scenes to put this budget together and to identify the potential efficiencies and savings, to make the uh requests for uh supplemental funds and and to, uh, at the end of the day, make some of the hard decisions about how uh we can all balance the budget together. And so I'm eternally grateful to the management team and to all the budget staff throughout the agencies that work really hard to get us to this point. And and finally, yes, I do really want to thank President Biden, Senator Baldwin, and Congressman Pocan uh because without the funding provided through the American Rescue Plan Act, we would not be able to uh balance a budget that had this many good things in it and and uh as little pain as there is. And so I'm very grateful uh for that federal support. And and uh hope that we can continue to count on the federal government to provide us support uh going forward in various ways. And so thank you all. I urge your vote uh for the motion before us tonight. And with that, the motion is to adopt uh the budget and the general property tax levy uh and declare our official intent to issue general obligation and revenue bonds. Alder Carter? You're muted.
Roll call.
A roll call has been requested. All those in favor, aye. Uh, those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye, Foster?
Aye.
Aye, Furman?
Aye.
Aye, Halverson?
Aye.
Aye, Harrington McKinney?
No.
No, Heck?
Aye.
Aye, Lemer?
Aye.
Aye, Martin?
Aye.
Aye, Miadze?
Aye.
Aye, Verveer?
Aye.
Aye, Vitterver?
Aye.
Aye, Waelia?
Aye.
Aye, Abbas?
Aye.
Aye, Alboris?
Aye.
Aye, Benford?
Aye.
Aye, Bennett?
Aye.
Aye, Carter?
Aye.
Aye, Conklin?
Aye.
Aye, Curry?
Aye.
Aye, Evers?
Aye.
Aye, 19 ayes and one no.
With 19 ayes and one no, the budget passes. Congratulations, everyone. Uh, we have one more brief item. Uh, it's item four on our agenda, Legisstar 68207, confirming uh that on 11/16 and 12/7, we will meet virtually. Uh, President Abbas?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item four. Are there any announcements? Seeing none, Alder Figueroa Cole, it's your turn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn at 10:40 PM. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good rest of your evening.